Call meeting in order.
Director Ossouy.
Present.
Director Vasquez.
Present.
Director Gareta.
Present.
Director Chacon. Director Getney.
Present.
Director Apodaca.
Present.
Director Asetuno.
Present.
President Hawkins.
Present. Okay, we'll have the, uh, on to the invitation and we'll have the pledge of allegiance by Director Ossotino.
His right hand, Holy Ryan Harden, repeat after me. Blank allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, our nation under God, indivisible, with every being just as all.
Please talk your head. Our Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this wonderful day that you have given us. Please watch over each and every one of us, watch over our cities and our counties. Give us the courage and the wisdom to do what is right, and in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Items, uh, too late to be, uh, walk-on items?
No, sir.
No. Okay, then we'll go to Metropolitan. Tammy, I think you're up.
Good morning, Directors.
Morning, morning.
Just a few updates to share with you, um, activities that's going on at the Metropolitan Water District. Um, so we're in the fixed treated water charge since September of 2016. Member agencies have worked to discuss components of incorporating a treatment fixed charge to Metropolitan's existing bundle breach structure. And this work group has, um, completed, or concluded, as you say. The group had reviewed and submitted a potential framework for members of the Finance and Insurance Committee to discuss. So it was brought to the Finance and Insurance Committee, um, earlier this month for discussion, and they will bring back next month for further discussion and then potential action. So with respect to the potential regional recycled water supply, uh, the feasibility study was released in December of 2016. And the approach of this study was to determine if the project would be feasible or capable of being accomplished, while addressing the project if it could be done and at what cost. So there were four major findings. Um, the first was the potential 150 million gallons per day program is technically feasible, and there are no fatal flaws. The program provides significant regional benefits. The cost and benefits are consistent with the 2015 IRP update. And it'd be, the project would be adaptable to future direct portable reuse regulations if needed. So the next steps are, um, the final design and demonstration facility is underway. Um, started this month in February 2017. And we, um, an award of a construction contract will be brought to the board for review and consideration in June of 2017. And then last, uh, just an oil bill, uh, spillway, we've all heard in the news, all the, the major damage that's happening. Just want to mention that there are no impact to Metropolitan's source of imported water supply currently. So we'll continue to, you know, hear what's going on there and we'll, we'll talk about that more with the Water Resources Committee. So that's all I have, answer any other questions?
Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Directors, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't either.
We'll go to item number four. Uh, Board of Directors of Reorganization, item A, Review of Administrative Code.
The administrative code provides, um, either at the annual reorganization meeting of the Board of Directors, or when there's a change in the, uh, composition of the Board of Directors, or upon a majority vote of the Board of Directors, uh, the Board may vote to select, uh, officers of President, Vice President, as well as the Metropolitan Water District Representatives. Uh, the process calls for a nomination of, of Directors to serve in these seats, um, which can be confirmed by a majority vote. And if there's no majority vote, then there is a process whereby, um, it goes in a rotation basically based upon the, um, time on which the Director served on the, the prior seat. So at this time, the floor is open for nominations of President, then Vice President, then election of Metropolitan Water District Representatives.
I'd like to make a motion that it stays the same.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, um, Director Apodaca be, um, if he is accepting of it, um, for President.
Second.
Local call.
If you confirm the nomination, it's for Director Apodaca to be President, seconded by Director Vasquez. Director Ossouy.
Uh, yes.
Director Vasquez.
Yes.
Director Gareta.
Yes.
Director Chacon.
No.
Director Getney.
Yes.
Director Apodaca.
Yes.
Director Asetuno.
No.
President Hawkins.
No. Okay. Uh, passes. You don't want to take over? Who do you want? Okay. We'll open our menus for Vice President.
Yeah, the floor is now open for nominations for Vice President.
Once again, I'd like to make a motion that it stays the same.
I second that nomination.
Director Ossouy.
Yes.
Director Vasquez.
Yes.
Director Gareta.
Yes.
Director Chacon.
Yes.
Director Getney.
Yes.
Director Apodaca.
Yes.
Director Asetuno.
Abstaining.
Director Hawkins.
Abstaining.
The floor is now open for nominations for Representatives to the Metropolitan Water District.
Excuse me, I got a question. Okay, so does Pedro stay as Vice President?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, can you, what was that again?
Oh, yeah, the floor is now open for nominations, uh, to Representatives for the Metropolitan Water District.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, once again, that it stays the same.
Second.
I make a motion that, um, the Representatives in Metropolitan, we, we had a, a first and a second, so we'll have to do a run on that first.
Director Ossouy.
No.
Director Vasquez.
No.
Director Gareta.
No.
Director Chacon.
Yes.
Director Getney.
No.
Director Apodaca.
No.
Director Asetuno.
Abstaining.
Director Hawkins.
Yes.
So that motion fails, is there, um, another nomination?
I'd like to make another nomination. I'd like to nominate, uh, our new board member over here from Downey. Who's from Downey, you?
Yeah.
Your name, please?
John.
John?
Yeah. Uh, thank you very much for that nomination, I appreciate it, I respectfully decline.
The floor is open for.
I nominate Tisha Vasquez.
Second that nomination.
Can I just also get confirmation to replace Metropolitan past, um, who are they replacing? So Director Vasquez will be replacing, you have Director Hawkins and you have Director Asetuno as the Mayor.
I would like to make a nomination that Bill Getney be the other Representative to Metropolitan Water District.
I second that.
So I do want to verify, uh, the nomination, uh, first, uh, for Director Vasquez and also for Director Getney, by Director Gareta, seconded by Director Apodaca. Correct?
Getney.
Director Ossouy.
Yes.
Director Vasquez.
Yes.
Director Gareta.
No.
Director Chacon.
Yes.
Director Getney.
Yes.
Director Apodaca.
Yes.
Director Asetuno.
Yes.
Director Hawkins.
Yes.
Motion passes. Should I confirm?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so just for confirmation, election of officers is completed. President Bob Apodaca, Vice President Director Asetuno, Metropolitan Water District Representatives, Director Getney, and Director Vasquez.
Wait, 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 um, can you repeat that, um, Director what? For what?
For the Metropolitan Water District. Um, Director Tisha Vasquez and Director William Getney are the Metropolitan Water District.
Well, just for the record, I'd like to take my vote back because I didn't know I was voting for Tisha Vasquez.
We'll note it on the record.
We'll note it on the record, it doesn't take the outcome, but we'll, we'll note it on the record.
Now, we're, we're on the consent calendar, is that correct? I don't find, do we have? Do we have any, any, uh, from five to, to eight, can we? Can we pull any of these, or do we have to, uh, go by each?
Well, anyone who wants to.
Do we have anyone here who wants to pull anything out of, from five to eight?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar, if there are no items that want to be pulled.
Five to eight?
Yes.
That was second. I'll second that.
Director Ossouy.
Yes.
Director Vasquez.
Yes.
Director Gareta.
Yes.
Director Chacon.
Uh, just for the record, uh, I won't abstain on anything that has to do with NOSAMAN.
So noted. Other than that, your votes are yes.
Correct.
Director Getney.
Yes.
Director Hawkins.
I'm abstaining on the NOSAMAN also, and, um, will be asked on the consent calendar.
So noted. Director Asetuno.
Yes.
Director Apodaca.
Yes. Item nine, request for, for authority for Principal Engineering Operations Specialist, retired.
Good morning, Directors. The district currently needs the resources of retired and new attendant, Mr. Norris Brandt, to continue various projects, uh, that are underway in our engineering, excuse me, Engineering Operations Department. Mr. Brandt is familiar with the operations of the district, having provided coverage during the staffing shortage, um, 2016, in addition to more than 20 years of professional experience in the water industry. Uh, Mr. Brandt is a retired and new attendant, and as such, he has retired from the CalPERS system. And CalPERS requires that in order for us to retain his services, um, the Board must approve the positions as a retired and new attendant, and add the position to the approved position list that was approved during, um, the fiscal, the current fiscal year's budget. This approval of this position will only be for a temporary period, it will only be for the current fiscal year. Consideration of Mr. Brandt's services for any additional time will be brought to the Board for approval. Funds have been identified in the existing budget to cover the cost of Mr. Norris Brandt's services. And he, as a retired and new attendant, he does not receive any other benefits other than his hourly rate. Unless there are any other, any questions, the recommended motion before you is that the Board want to approve the classification of Principal Engineering and Operations Specialist, retired and new attendant, as noted in Exhibit A, and to amend the position list for fiscal year 2016-17 to include the Principal Engineering Operations Specialist, retired and new attendant position, as noted in Exhibit B. Does the Board have any questions?
Yes. Do we have any current projects going on here?
Yes, we have various recycled water customer development efforts underway, which Mr. Norris Brandt has been helping. First, as a consultant, um, he did that from the summer through the end of November of last year, as well as he'll be helping Mr. Lonnie Hurst, our Principal Engineer, with capital projects. Is there anything that you'd like to add? Kevin?
Well, we, we have, the, uh, our, our, the, the capital projects, and then we have the on-call contracts that we just left for consultants to do, it's for short things, and we have some, so there's quite a bit of work going on over the next four months.
How many engineers do we have working for us right now?
We have, uh, three.
Okay, can you name them?
Yeah, Lonnie Curtis, Jackie Kuntz, and Roman Kuzans.
Okay, what about Hugo?
Hugo is, uh, an intern.
Okay, so we need one more, and we have how many projects?
Well, he's, okay, we do one more, he's, uh, 10 hours a week primarily, he's at a higher level of experience than, other than Lonnie. And that's why, in the, in the projects that we have, it's not just the projects, it's the size and complexity of the projects.
Okay, I just, I don't want to create another specific right here.
No, I understand fully.
Okay, I'll be watching that closely, thank you.
Thank you.
Another question, is, um, is this in the budget, is this position in the budget?
It's, we have identified funds within the existing budget. Um, this is why the position is coming to you, because it was not included last year when you approved the budget, in order for the district to be able to employ Mr. Brandt for 10 hours a week. As a retired and new attendant, the Board must take an action and approve the position.
Will we have to bring any of our reserves around?
No, this has, uh, these already funds that have been out, that have been identified. So they're, basically, the Engineering Operations Manager is moving funds from the existing budget to cover this cost.
So if I may, the term of employment is going to end the end of June?
Yes, unless the Board approves the extension of this position.
Cool, and there's adequate funds in here to cover the expenses, in, within the existing budget?
Yes.
And, uh, General Manager, you mentioned that you need a position such as this one at a higher level in order to successfully implement the projects that you already have.
So it's, it's about eight to 10 hours a week?
Yeah.
And primarily checking and verifying stuff, and part of the reason frankly is that some of the work that I used to do technically with additional directors, I need to spend more time on, so.
Correct.
But in, uh, and with this position, whether we continue it next year will be part of the budget process for next year, but to finish out this year for the next four months, this is.
With that, I make a motion to approve.
Uh, I got another question before we do that. What's the amount we're looking at?
The total amount, and this is in the memo as well, um, for the current fiscal year is $28,218.
And that's for the year?
This is for the current fiscal year from now until the end of June 30th.
I have a quick question, um, in the memo, you mentioned that you're going to transfer funds from the consultant's line to the appropriate, uh, salary and benefit line. So would it be correct to say that we're going to see a reduction in the consultant's, uh, consultant's line of the $28,218? So in other words, that money will not be used for any external consultants, right? And I don't, I don't know, I couldn't find the actual consultant's line in there, I'm sure it's there, I don't want to say anything like that. But basically what we would see, and if I understand it, is you're going to actually move money from whatever we might extend to, a consulting firm of some kind, or Mr. Brandt's firm, and basically use this within the district. So we're going to see basically a zero, zero net transfer.
That is correct.
The General Manager has the authority within the budget to move from back and forth, so this is within the authority?
I have a question, um, I'm going to be abstaining on this issue because, um, I'm not 100% clear on what we're doing, and I'm trying to understand the, um, staffing in the recycled water, um, program. It's clear, I, I work with, um, Mr. Brandt, it's clear, I, I think the agency needs the experience that he brings to the table. Um, but I just need to understand the program a little bit more, and having just come on board, I'm going to stay on this, um, issue today.
So I just want to verify, we apparently have a first by Director Ossouy and a second Director Vasquez, as we said?
Just for the record, is the gentleman in the house?
No, he's not here today.
Do you want to give us the local call?
Local, yes.
Director Ossouy.
Yes.
Director Vasquez.
Yes.
Director Gareta.
Abstaining.
Director Chacon.
No.
Director Getney.
Abstaining.
Director Hawkins.
No.
Director Asetuno.
Abstaining.
Director Apodaca.
Yes. Motion fails. Item 10, contract award in the amount of $1,085,000, $65,045 with Valley Soil Incorporated for the execution of the Department of Water Resources, W R, DWR Conservation Proposition 84 Grant.
Good morning, Directors. Yes, it's a long title, um, for a lot of work that we'll be doing. Um, I'd like to direct you to our PowerPoint presentation, this is a timeline that I'm going to begin with. I'd like to share with you that, um, this project has been a labor of love for over a year when staff began to, uh, plan for when the Prop 50 funds that we just completed, the, um, retrofits of public sites, and we have the opportunity to apply for Prop 84 funds. So where are we today and what have we done? Um, in the timeline, you'll see that on November 10th, we released the RFP. On November 18th, we hosted a pre-proposal briefing. On December 8th was our proposal deadline. We held a interview panel on January 20th, and here we are today on February 27th to seek your approval. So what is this project? This project is, as I mentioned, Prop 84 funds. This is a water use efficiency grant program. We applied through the Greater LA Integrated Regional Water Management Process, and the grant is titled "The Southeast Water Efficiency Project." I've mentioned this grant before as far as a continuation of Prop 50, where we were able to, um, accept applications from public sites to do retrofits and audits of their sites. I'd like to share with you as far as what we were able to accomplish with Prop 50. We were able to do the 35 sites that were audited and 29 sites. With those numbers, I'd like to inform you that as part of those initial applications, we actually had a demand, a request of 351 sites in our service area. So that's why this grant is so timely, even though we've had a tremendous amount of snowpack, and we have had quite a bit of rain, we're still in a drought, and as an agency, we still need to help our public agencies reach their goals. So as far as the proposals, um, and following our procurement process, in October, November, we did some outreach. This was a vehicle and way for us to try and encourage more vendors to submit proposals. We contacted the California Landscape Contractors Association, which we had not done before. Um, we also reached out to Metropolitan's Small Business Outreach Program, which they shared the RFP to their list of applicants on their websites, as well as in their database. And we also reached out to all of our water agencies in Southern California through Metropolitan. And so as a result, we did receive two proposals, though we had hoped to get more. Both of these proposals are vendors that were very qualified and had some experience. So on November 18th, we invited those two vendors to participate in a pre-proposal briefing. Again, this was an opportunity for those that were interested to meet staff, and we'd be able to talk to them about, um, what this project was all about, and what we needed as an agency, and what our requirements were as part of the grant. As you can see there, a detail of the agenda. We had covered, um, not only the, the grant requirements, but also the district's current project labor agreement. And what we found out is the reason, one of the reasons that we didn't receive more proposals was because some of the vendors that we had contacted, because we wanted to know why, why didn't we not get, um, more proposals? Was because there was a concern as far as the language in our current project labor agreement. And there was a lot of, um, vague information in there, um, that made some of these vendors uncomfortable. But again, we did receive two proposals, and we were able to meet those vendors. We also invited the, um, uh, plumbers union that is listed in our project labor agreement to attend that pre-proposal briefing as well. So it gave these vendors an opportunity to speak with them and to see about some of the qualified plumbers that work through that union office. So on December 8th, we did receive the two proposals from ECO Tech and Valley Soil. And then we held a interview panel. This interview panel consisted of two Central Basin staff members, myself and Sharon Kumar, who handles our contracts. And we also invited a staff member from the city of Norwalk, as well as Los Nantos School District. The scoring as far as the categories for the, um, for the proposals and the interviews were the completeness of the proposal, company qualifications, evaluation of experience, the capability to meet the district, Los Angeles County Flood Control District and Department of Water Resources requirements, as well as being able to follow our budget and the fees. The panel, as you can see, um, as far as the percentages between the two companies, is really close, neck to neck, 78 versus 77, and really it was a result of Valley Soil interviewing very well. Um, they focused on what they had done outside, um, all of the years of experience that they had, and when ECO Tech had done their interview, they mostly focused on what they've done with Central Basin. And they really didn't focus too much on, um, some of the other projects that they worked on that were similar to ours. So really, that was, um, uh, the results, as you can see there. Um, during the, um, interview also, they were able to, um, communicate to the panel on their established relationships with subcontractors. This was very important because we needed to know that they had someone in line with our requirements and our proposal that would be ready to, um, get this project started after the, uh, contract was, um, completed. As far as fiscal impacts, the $134,0315 is included in this current budget that goes to June 30th. As far as the remaining amount of $279,216, and forgive me, there is a typo there, um, that's funding that is part of our local cost share, which will have to be budgeted in the future. There is concern, um, in talking with Josh and planning for our budget, that we are going to have some challenges next year in lining up our own budget. And so we are going to write a letter to the county and ask them if there's a way for us to align the grant funds, which is a total of 700, give me one second, I have the number right here. $745,000 and, um, 902, I'm sorry, $745,902 are grant funds. Central Basin cost share is $413,531. The way how the grant is currently written is we have to exhaust our cost share first before we can tap into the grant funds. What we plan to do is write a letter to the county and ask them if there's a way that we can utilize the grant funds, tap into those funds, as Central Basin is also, um, utilizing and using their cost share.
Senator, if I may comment on that, the grant is actually not written that way, that is a rule that the county, they negotiated with the Department of Water Resources during the negotiation for the, for the overall integrated regional water management grant. There is another area that, uh, integrated resource manager that does not have this requirement. This is a new requirement, so not showed up in prior years. So we seem nothing well, we don't know at this time whether we can get it up. But certainly we would rather do three-fourths of their money or one-fourth dollars and do that over the next three years as opposed to do our money upfront, and the big budget hit next year, and then, so we have their money in the last two years. So it's, it makes more sense to smooth it out from our standpoint.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, also, I want to mention, okay, um, also in, in working with finance and budgeting the next three years of this project, um, these are operating costs, this is not a capital expense. And being that the grant matches, um, the grant matches including expense for the district's debt coverage ratio. Um, that was something that, um, Josh wanted to make sure that everyone understands that as a district has established a target of 119% DCR for fiscal year 2018, there will be some concern next year as far as what cost share we'll be able to budget, um, for this program. So if we do less next year, we'll just need to catch up the next fiscal year as far as our activity on this grant. So I wanted to make sure, mention that.
Tammy, I got a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, can you give me any documentation that was sent to the unions on this?
Yes, we have, um, yes, and I can give you the contact person that, um, attended on their behalf.
Thank you.
No problem.
Would you also send that to me as well?
Sure, everyone.
Thanks.
A question on this, okay, if we're having trouble this year, and we've already got 130,000 budget, that means that we're going to have to come up with the 400,000, 400 or 300,000 in the next three years.
It's two. So the difference is we have 134, 315, that's already in the budget for this current fiscal year. It's mutual, and then June 30th, we'll have a balance of 279,216 as our local cost share to commit.
Okay, so you said this was not a capital project. So that means that if we have to take this money out of our reserves, there's. So that means that if we have to take this money out of our reserves, there's no vehicle to put it back into the reserves.
That's not something I...
Two things, first of all, the money is not just cash, it's also in-kind services, Sandy's time and that, and also some of the Met rebate's count to it.
Do we get a breakdown of that?
Yes. So the budget I have here...
My concern again is we see the target, our reserves on just about everything, and even when we're in, not financial trouble, but we're crunching the numbers on our finances and we take it out of reserves, there's no way of putting it back.
So luckily today, I'm not asking for reserves.
Yeah, this comes out of our operating budget.
Yes.
For next year too, we're talking about budgeting next year. We're not asking for reserves at this time.
Yes.
No, not at this time. She said we were already, and then next year, we were having kind of a crunch. Josh, we were having kind of a crunch on our budget for next year. If we already have to set this aside, that means we're going to have to go to reserves and our other balances. And we still don't want that.
Yeah, I understand, Director. We've had that discussed. We have an entire budget process that we're doing, and we're having a workshop in April that'll go through where we are in the budget process, where we stand in terms of revenue, costs, et cetera, and what our goal is going to be to make the 115 or 119, you know, debt coverage ratio target. But that's, but right now, we're not asking to take any money. As you recall, if you look at our budget for this year, we generate 700,000 in free cash flow.
Yeah, we're putting out 400,000 for somebody, and then the grant's putting out 700. Do we have any chance of ever getting our money back? 100?
No, it's being spent as part of the matching funds to do conservation at the cities, schools, and other nonprofits in our service area.
Director Hawkins, to answer your question regarding the way how the budget and the project is separated or organized, our cost share from my time to manage the grant is When that, and that's already included in my salary, so you're getting me for free, no. The grant amount is 63,000. When we reach that 30,000 for that line item, for that task, I am able to tap the rest to the grant. I don't have to exhaust everything that's committed by the district before I'm able to require, to claim to the grant. So 30,427 is for my time, that's my cost share. And then 63,057 is then, after I reach that 30,000, I can bill. The remaining amount, as far as the construction, implementation, and activities, is 377,366. So that's our cost share. And then the grant portion is 682,844. And then there's a small amount for planning, design, engineering, and environmental documentation of 5,738,000, that is part of our cost share. So our total cost share amount is broken down into three tasks. When you reach one task, you can bill to the grant on that one task. When you reach the second one, you can bill to the second. You don't have to do all of, we don't have to exhaust all of our local cost share first before...
Okay, that's what he said, we had to exhaust, we had to buy our share up first before. My concern is, can we afford to take free money? Because we're putting out 400,000 to give away 700,000, and our budget has been very tight the last two or three years. And so it's getting where this is a lot of money for us.
Mr. Chair, clarification. Was this grant approved by this board, by the previous board? And at the time it was approved, were there factors that there was going to be a matching amount that this agency would have to put up? Was that, were they in front of that?
Absolutely.
So the previous board knew that when they approved this grant, that there was going to be a matching fund? Did they know exactly how much that was going to be? Approximately the 40,000?
Yes.
Okay, so with all due respect, Director Hawkins, the board took action to do this. You have a matching amount that the agency has to put up. The nuance that we're talking about today is that we've got to come up with that matching fund first. Staff has said they're going to contact the county of Los Angeles and find out if they can change that. My own agency did the same thing. We did a grant with Gateway Cities, and we have a matching fund, and we were also told that we have to do our matching fund first. It's a smaller amount, we have to, Director Hawkins, but we have to do that first. Staff needs to jump on that right away and get back to this board immediately. The point here, though, is the grant's here in your hand, it's been approved, we've got to deal with this funding that we're going to come up with, possibly the whole amount over the next three years or in two years? What's the timeline?
Three years.
Three years. And it's, and part of that's in the budget now, is that correct?
Yes, 134,000 and some changes.
So with all due respect, we'll probably have to come back and discuss this later, but it's in front of us now, and reluctantly, I would make a motion to approve.
Coming back to that, first of all, our budget has changed drastically. We were 200 and some thousand dollars short just in our legal in the last couple of months, plus some of the other stuff that we haven't had the income that we thought we would have. So it's changed drastically since we originally started with this. My question now is, can we afford to do, to give away this much money so that we can give away more money? And that's why I'm concerned, because they keep wanting, this group keeps wanting to go back to our reserves to dwindle them down. And we have to keep our reserves up, that's our only strength that we have.
With all due respect, I totally agree with you, but we're going to have a number of other action items coming up that are going to be similar in the same thing, Director Hawkins. So then, should we put in a motion to give back the grant? Is that what you're thinking?
No, no, I'm asking if we can afford it, because we're...
It's a done deal.
As I mentioned, we're struggling with our next year's budget already, and we're already attacking or adding something to it. I just want to make sure we have it, because I don't care what they do with that, but I don't want to go in reserves to match this because they can't balance the budget.
But I'm, yeah, I'm trying to, we're planning to go into reserves for this. We're planning to give you a budget. What we will budget for next year is the appropriate amount of activity that we can afford. Now, ideally, we would do the whole 270 and complete our in-kind obligation, and then the next couple of years would be strictly on air done. So I don't think, but again, if we don't have the money for it, we may only do 130, but we can do more than next year. We can spread it out our own way. So we're going to do two things. We're going to ask them to waive it so we can spread out like we normally would, or we will spread it out if we have to for budgetary reasons.
Because our budget does not allow for us to, if we take it out of reserves, it does not allow us to put it back unless it is a capital project. And this is not a capital project, because that's what I argued about six months ago. We need a vehicle to be able to put it back in there, but that was only for capital projects.
Director, each year, when we've been our operating budget, it generates a certain amount of excess cash. Your revenue will exceed your costs by a certain amount. Whether you choose to put that into the reserves at that time, it goes automatically. At that time, you could decide whether you want to spend it the next year on capital or you should totally match your reserves. It's a consistent budgetary process. We have drawn down the reserves, and you'll see in the workshop in April, it's been drawn down considerably, and you'll see in the presentation, I just going to give you about the mid-year review. But in terms of this project, we have ways to bet, we're not asking to take a penny out of reserves. Second is, this is not, in a way, we get caught if this is our money, we're giving it away. We're not giving it away. This is money that comes from our ratepayers, and we're investing it back into facilities that are going to conserve water within our service area. So it's an investment. Now, it's not as a direct investment, it's building, capital project, but if something is needed by the community, we wouldn't be doing it. And we have heard and discussed upon this project over the last 18 months, I believe. I appreciate your concern, and we believe that we are not proposing to take things out of reserve on this one. Not at all. You'll see in the budget that we'll put next year, it'll be a painful budget, but I'm determined how much of this we do. Right now, we need authorization with the total contract.
So this is in line with what we see over there on the wall, water reliability? We will partner with retail and wholesale, wholesalers to provide local, regional partnerships. I mean, that's what we do here. So I think this is in line with the goals that we have established as a board, I think it was last year.
And as Sandy mentioned, this is a program that was extraordinarily successful. I mean, it's the third one of its kind, because you actually had the Department of Energy Grant, then the Prop 50 Grant, now this, we're basically doing the same thing, and we still have a met the needs of our service area. There's still a number of requests that we were unable to fulfill.
As I may, you are, Mr. President. Just for me to understand, if there are any surplices in the budget, then maybe the board can choose where to place this method.
It automatically goes into our reserves, and then, you know, and Josh will give them. We get into the mid-year review, Josh will explain a little bit about the finances, but that's a good opportunity. And then we'll have the financial workshop, but that's a, that's basically, it goes into our reserves, and money has gone into reserves. Now, separate from that, we have capital expenditures, we have lawsuits and settlements and stuff like that, those hopefully are all behind us.
Question?
Yes.
When the RFP was issued, in the language of the RFP, was the criteria for selection articulated?
Yes, it was. I do have a copy of the RFP here in front of me.
I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes.
Say what?
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
So that I can understand, or make sure that my understanding is correct, over the course of the next two years, not including '16, '17, there's roughly around 135,000 each year that we need to, that's our share.
Yes.
Is any of that in-kind contribution?
There is a portion, yes, to answer your question, yes, my time.
And also, also there's a Met rebate portion, I think, we came back to about 40,000 last time I looked at it.
Yeah, that, and we were planning as far as the Met rebates. So for all of the devices, because we're trying to be savvy as possible as far as, you know, reaching our goal, is we have devices that we're going to be putting in, whether they're waterless urinals, toilets, aerators, sprinkler nozzles. Metropolitan offers rebates on those items. And so we would be able to apply for those rebates, I've already submitted the request early this fiscal year, to be able to get some of those funds back and use that as part of our cost share. One thing I hadn't mentioned also is, part of Prop 50, we were able to work a partnership with Suburban Water Systems, as well as with Liberty. Both of those agencies provided 100,000, 10,000 of which came to the project management, and 90,000 which went directly to retrofits and audits. And so my hope is that we'll have more retail agencies that will want to participate in that type of partnership and be able to give those funds. Those funds can account for our cost share.
Okay, so if you take the 135,000, and you isolated the in-kind, the value of the in-kind, and all these rebates that we can capitalize on, you back it up with the 135, roughly, how much would it be left off, or are we matching to, not exact number?
Okay, exact, I would say about 75,000.
So then, potentially, our obligation is 75,000 a year, not 135.
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
So just to verify, I have a motion by Director Raheda, and a second by Director Moskis to approve this item?
Yes, and before we go ahead and take a vote, I do want to take an opportunity to comment about this particular program. I think it has been a great program for Central Basin. The cities and the communities that we, that we service, the school districts have been able to benefit from this program, and some of our parks have seen retrofits to help them conserve water. Let's not forget that the governor declared a drought. We've been in drought mode for the past five years. And so this is one of a number of programs that Central Basin has rolled out to help us address the issue of the drought. So I'm very proud of this program. I do think that as we, you know, we have new board members, we certainly need to revisit, you know, the goals that we have set for this organization. But I strongly believe that this organization, I mean, that this program is in line with the goals and objectives that, that we set for this organization, I think it was two years ago. So that's my comment.
Mr. President, do I need to read the motion specifically for the public that's here, or?
Can I have the record? The staff can read that for us.
That'd be fine, okay.
They're recommending a motion that the board authorize the general manager to enter into an agreement with Valley Soil Inc. for the amount not to exceed 1,65,945.
Confirming it was a motion by Director Raheda, and a second by Director Moskis. Director Oscoey?
Yes.
Director Moskis?
Yes.
Director Raheda?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
I got a question, before I just vote on this item. Did we do everything correctly?
Yes.
Advertised, everything?
Yes.
How many people applied for this?
I'm sorry?
How many people applied?
So the initial application started last year when we did Prop 50. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, we received over 20 applicants for over 300 sites. So how we are starting Prop 84 is by the order in which those applications that we were not able to assist with, to do retrofits or audits, those sites become a priority with this grant. And we'll just work down that list. And all the applications are dated. We've provided follow-up, so everyone knows where they are in the queue. We will, just like Prop 50, limit the amount of sites. We will ask them which sites use the most amount of potable water. So then that way, we're able to reach as many schools and as many cities as possible.
Okay, right now, I'm going to stay on this item for the reason is that I need to see the documents that were sent out to the unions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Director Gebney?
Yes.
Director Hawkins?
Yes.
Director Aldey Tuna?
Yes.
President Nakulata?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just before we leave this item, can I ask an indulgence, in the future, I think, Mr. General Manager, Kevin? I think the motion would be better if it said something like, it may not, not to exceed the amount, but to state that 413,000, 29,000 was matching funds, and the grant is 745,000. So it doesn't look like it's all coming from the district, or it's all a grant, it's...
Sounds good.
That'd be greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, Presentation Discussion of Fiscal Year 2015-16 Annual Water Use Report.
Good morning, Directors. I'm here to present the completion of the fiscal year 2015-2016 Water Use Report. If you will direct your attention to the screen. Similar to what we put out last year, the 2015-2016 Water Use Report details water use within the Central Basin service area. The report includes detailed water use for each purveyor within our service area, including imported water, groundwater, and recycled water. What's a little different about this report compared to last year's report is this year's report now includes agencies whose main source of water is groundwater, whereas last year, the report mainly focused on purveyors with imported water connections. The report shows insights into trends such as historic water use and weather comparisons, which you'll see in the following slides. There is also a separate section devoted to Central Basin's recycled water system. The report has been developed with input from our purveyors. One important thing about this report is that it can be used as a water resource tool for purveyors who may not have had the resources to develop something similar. So the next slide shows an example of what is included in the report. What is displayed here is the historic 10-year water use within the Central Basin service area. As I mentioned earlier, insights into trends can be seen by looking at the graphs. Here you can see how water use has significantly decreased from fiscal year 2006, 2007 to present, with fiscal year 2015-16 being the lowest total water use in recent history. And each purveyor within the district's service area has a report similar to what you can see under Exhibit A. And this last slide displays a snapshot of what's included in the recycled water section. Here we can see the historic 10-year recycled water use of Central Basin's recycled water system, along with the detailed use for each of Central Basin's recycled water customers along the bottom. Each recycled water purveyor has a detailed report within the report, which can be seen under Exhibit A. That's all I have for the slides. And if approved today, we will finalize the report and distribute file copies to the board and to all of our purveyors. If there are no questions, I will go ahead and read the recommended motion, which is that the board authorizes the general manager to receive and file this report.
You don't need to roll call them.
Question?
I'll move to receive and file.
Second? Director Oscoey?
Yes.
Director Moskis?
Yes.
Director Raheda?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
Yes.
Director Gebney?
Yes.
Director Hawkins?
Yes.
Director Aldey Tuna?
Yes.
President Nakulata?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, before we move, I just want to state, very good and... Mr. Chair, before we move, I just want to state, very good and specific report, I enjoy reading it. I, I think what folks need to take away from that report is that purveyors want to sell water, but were mandated not to and, and conserving. And when we turn to MWD, we'd like to buy their water, but it's very expensive, so if we can pump it from the ground, that's what we're doing, because we need to, to keep our rates down. Recycle, this shows very good trends for this agency. I, I think, I, I hope this agency looks at that report in the biggest picture rather than down, just looking at me and my agency and what we're doing, look at the bigger picture and how we can look at this report, it's very detailed, I really appreciate it. Thanks staff for it, thank you, Mr. Show Manager, Kevin. But just know that purveyors are doing everything they can, they would like to pump more water if they can, but it's, it's tough. And, so we don't pump water, then we have to raise rates, and that's tough, and it impacts this agency, it impacts WD, then they raise the RA, and just, it goes on and on and on, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item twelve, fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen, mid-year financial. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. There are three times each year that your finance officer speaks most clearly on the record, and this is one of those. The other is the budget each year, we decide on what we understand about our financial environment and we make a plan for it. The annual audit is strictly based on facts and our history. The mid-year report, we take a look at the trends we see, the facts we know, and we make conjecture for your future. A lot of what I say, or some of what I say, will change between now and budget preparation. There are other elements that we know differently today, having to do with five-year sales estimates. So, some of what I say today will be very important for conversation for you in the We have three items, three businesses we run in terms of water sales, and the, the three are there for you. There's a fourth, it's not a business, we have a direct levy, a parcel charge, that makes up about one quarter of our income every year, it's a parcel levy, assessment charge of ten dollars a parcel. I don't show that here, it drives itself automatically every year. Potable water, the mainstay of Central Basin. Budget estimate this year is thirty thousand acre feet. We estimated two weeks ago twenty thousand five hundred acre feet, and now we know it's nineteen thousand five hundred. We know something else from those Hurlehi's five-year estimates that you just completed next year. We are a twenty thousand acre foot agency for the next five years. This is a change from what we were saying last year, it's a change from the twenty-eight thousand that we used for the financial projection last year. Replenishment water, budget of thirty-one thousand, we estimate to do much better than that this year, if the final six thousand that's shown within that thirty-eight thousand dollar estimated actual is sold during March and April of this year. Replenishment water's future is a little bit more rocky than potable water. Within four years, Ms. Hurlehi estimates that our replenishment sales go to zero. Next year, the sales drop by seventeen thousand nine hundred acre feet, which is a financial consequence of one point three million dollars. In our recycled business, forty-eight, one hundred and fifty-eight acre feet is estimated, we're seeing the estimates coming in less than that. Two years ago, we believed estimates of how quickly we would advance as a recycled water sales agency to be a little bit more aggressive than we understand today. Our estimate two years ago was eighteen percent higher than what we suggest will be sold Oops, that's the wrong way. So, in summary, next year potable goes up by, we estimate, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, replenishment goes down by one point two five million. That would be the estimate of the budget difficulty we face in fiscal year eighteen, the process of which has already commenced with your staff. Something very important in one of these metrics was mentioned just a little bit earlier, and I'm just taking a step back in deference to our new directors. Because we have borrowed money, we are treated differently as a water agency. It's a sacred obligation with the credit community. The pledge we have made is not collateral, we have pledged to manage our financial affairs in such a way that the debt coverage ratio, the DCR, you'll hear it often referred to as, is a hundred and fifteen percent as a minimum, greater than our net revenue. So, it's the reverse of a stop sign, it's a mandatory requirement that we speed at a hundred and fifteen percent greater than the debt we pay. It's a very unusual feature in local government, and it is not a general fund feature, Director Osskui. This is enterprise accounting management, and the credit community takes this very seriously. To employ another synonym or comparison, it's like a permanent home mortgage that's evaluated every month. They want to know how we're doing on our debt coverage ratio, they take it very seriously. They also take very seriously how we're doing in our reserves. It's measured in two different ways, they are synonymous, the amount we keep in our reserves and the translation of that into number of days cash in our operation. That is a very quick introduction to the metrics of being a borrowing agency, but and so I, do please stop me at any time for further explanation, or when we do get to a workshop for this type of conversation, it is something we can really spend a lot of time on. The net revenue and debt coverage ratio, inextricably related, can't be one without the other. Debt coverage ratio was a hundred and twelve percent last year, that's not what we're required to have. A hundred and fifteen is the minimum requirement, and it may be lower this year. The five-year financial forecast that we completed as a component of the vote that you made to increase rates over a two-year period, and as a primary component of what was used to go to Wall Street and refinance a portion of our debt last August, did not anticipate that our potable sales would be going down to the extent that Ms. Hurlehi says. Our recycled sales, they're not improving or worsening right now. You have a cadre of people sitting in the room here who are focused on that very thing, and they're not wasting any time or energy. But right now, we haven't got the first deal done on a connection, and we're a long way away from these capital projects. But there's an energy that Mr. Hunt has bottled here with regard to recycled waters, recycled water, and I do not want to understate that to you. Back to replenishment sale, the fourth bullet there, it goes to zero in four years. We have to become an agency that exists on a debt coverage ratio, makes ends meet without this source of income. Now, this is no surprise to the credit community, they've been saying this for years to us, you can't rely on this source of income because WRD does not have to buy it from us, and we know they don't want to buy it from us. But they buy it because they have to. There are, is also a lot of energy in the room on, on the water resources side of our operation, Ms. Hurlehi, Mr. Guardio, and Mr. Hunt, who have an awful lot to say about what our water sales estimates actually are today stated, and how they may be changing over the next thirty, sixty, ninety days, and certainly over the next few years.
Excuse me, Mr. Better, I, I just, let's share, I, I think in the past, WRD did not want to buy water from you folks, and I apologize to everyone, but that is not the case today. In the past, it was extremely difficult to buy water from this agency, that's not the case today. And, and, and I would go on the record that even though WRD is trying to become self, the ability to just provide all of the replenishment water in the basin, they will continue to buy water from this agency as long as this agency continues to act in the manner that it is today. You're selling more water there because you make it very easy for them to buy. So, WRD and Central Basin are working very well together, and, and they will continue to buy water as long as water is available, and that, and there's going to be a need, and there will be problems with the new plant. And if there are problems, Mr. Better, they will need replenishment water.
It's not my place, Director, to make opinion about the state of our relationship with WRD, nor to make opinion about what may transpire in the future, but I, what I have is the estimates from Ms. Hurlehi now.
If I might mention another thing, we actually need with WRD regularly, we are going to be meeting with them the next couple of weeks to talk about long-term projections. You're totally correct. We went through this in Orange County twenty years ago when the groundwater replenishment system was built, they said we'll never buy a drop of replenishment water, they bought sixty thousand acre feet last year, and they want a contract with the new project for a permanent supply. Why, because things change, basins grow. What we can't though is rely on as a stable source of revenue. So, that's the point, the judge, and I do agree on replenishment sales could go to zero in a given year, well then you'd have up and down in your financials. So, what we're going to try to do is, over a period of time, we must off relying on replenishment water sales to make the budget, and then after that, that money, I mean, if we do it, we go into our reserves to build up our reserves or use for capital projects and recycling. So, it's a strategy that, as we go through the workshop in April, you'll see that's one of the issues there. But it is, it is, and the second is with the reduction of the potable sales. There's also an equity issue that comes out, there are many agencies that benefit from our services and conservation, benefit from our net representation, and yet don't pay a cent. So, there's an equity issue that we have to tackle, and that might be a new revenue source coming up. So, there are, well, there are problems in Joshua's regular foundation, he's also going to work with me to come up with solutions over the next couple of months, so, so it should be a financially, financially exciting time to move forward.
Well, it is an exciting time, I'm telling you something that you didn't know, and I'm telling you something that we didn't know two weeks ago. It's very important. And, the last bullet there, debt coverage ratio, now, we, we said in our borrowing documents that we would achieve a hundred and nineteen percent next year. We're asking you in the recommendation in this item to lower it to a hundred and fifteen percent next budgetary year. That's a fact, that's what we're asking you for. This is the history of the debt coverage ratio. Two thousand fifteen was an exceptional year in terms of a write-off of, of expense and collection of grant revenues, neither of which we planned for, that made the year very good. Two thousand thirteen was an exceptional year when the district bought out and refinanced a portion of its prior debt. That took the DCR down extensively. This is our own calculation using the Moody methodology. Now, when they do it, S and P and Moody's, they do it their own way, but I have their template of how they approach it. This approximates the way Wall Street sees us. Two thousand sixteen, as I mentioned, did not hit the target. Two thousand seventeen, we're not sure of. Two thousand eighteen, we're asking you to reduce it to the minimum. We had reserves of twenty-nine million at the end of two thousand eleven. At the end of last fiscal year, it's twelve point eight million. In my projection, for the end of this year, it'll be eleven point five million. We are spending our reserves down. And for all the things that several of you spoke of earlier, some of those are part of the mix, yes. And that estimate's worked out in, in your document, the agenda item for this. The reserves, if I use an academic equivalency, just for sake of conversation, we're at about a C or C minus at twelve point eight million. We spent through some of that this year. So, it gets into a conundrum. The basic business premise that the district has established is, we are going to invest in recycled water as a future. And a lot of that has happened, some of it through reserves, a lot of it through your operating budget. But we need more capital for recycled water projects, and we face declining sales. It becomes difficult because if you borrow, it affects your debt coverage ratio. Credit community doesn't want to see us do that. And we, we look for grants for construction, that's a, that's been very hard for us to find. So, you'll see later on in your agenda, some of these items will come to you with regard to a capital project. And on our, this, this came up when Sandy was speaking earlier, the match portion. For the construction side, this will be absorbed as a construction match, which Director Hawkins means it comes from reserves, it's not part of our operating budget. But in so many ways of seeing this, it's six one-way or half dozen another, your operating budget is having trouble, your reserves are having trouble as well. And this demonstrates two of the three in black, the metrics that the credit community looks at, and this shows you what I just described to you on the prior slide, two thousand eleven on the far right, working its way all the way to the end of the current fiscal year. Eleven point five million is the amount in reserve. Water rates, made reference to this just a couple moments ago. With a two-year rate case that the five-member board adopted last August, at twenty-four point five percent, it's split over two years, two fiscal years. The first sixteen point five percent was effective on January first, just started. The second residual eight percent is effective on July first of this year. The way it was structured architecturally was not to have to return to you for water rate increases until twelve months from now. The difficulty that we face is now that we know our sales are going down so far in potable, and now that we know the replenishment is on a four-year watch list, we're seeing some revenue decrease, especially in potable, that's offsetting what the rate increases were. Sales down by twenty-two percent, sales rates up by twenty-four point five, it's having a negating effect. In the future years, it was assumed in the forecast, and it was not a vote that we asked you for, that in nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, each of those three fiscal years, that this board would act with five percent increases each year. And again, we have not asked you for that, these rate increases are effective through June thirty of two thousand eighteen. The five-year forecast, it's a requirement as a borrowing agency, if you're going to approach Wall Street, we did an awful lot of work last year to put this together with consulting help. It's a product now that we own, that you will see when we start rolling out our budget in April. And you'll see how integral the sales projections are to that, and how integral our planning for capital projects and grants are in their effect on the forecast. As a reminder, this forecast assumes that we would be above a hundred and fifteen percent debt coverage ratio for each and every one of the five fiscal years. So, we hope that is something that we can sustain, but with some total of, of a lot of what I'm telling you today, is this is going to be difficult for us. Treasury management, we have been progressively converting maturing instruments, or called instruments, into cash either with LEAF or in our bank. This is not a conservative strategy, and we've done so in order to cover the cash flow differential between spending money on Prop 50 grant and receiving it. We spent over seven hundred thousand on Prop 50 and we haven't received a check yet in return. That could be coming to us in a week or two, or depending on if you believe Los Angeles County or not, in a month or two. But what we have done is converted more cash so that our treasury, how we pay our bills, how we manage ourselves, is a lot less conservative than it might otherwise be. Bring it all together. So, we have a revenue basket, if you will. One assessment charge that self-drives, three water sales businesses. All three of our water sales businesses face different and unique challenges. The replenishment sales business- The replenishment sales business faces a severe challenge. We've seen also from our performance on metrics that we may be spending more than we should for operations and from reserves. So it is that these metrics may not be doing what we want to improve our industry standard, standing. And the decline in potable sales may make matters worse for us. We should, your entire management team agrees, create a business continuity plan for this district in four years, three years, even up to 24 months from now, for a future without replenishment water. We certainly need to be positioned for this question. And the sum total of all these points brings to attention the basic business model that we operate with, that was adopted in the strategic plan two years ago, of being an aggressive investor in recycled water. I know that's something the general manager wants to have conversations with you about when that is planned by you and President coming up in the future. If we don't perform, get the return on investments that we want from our operating budget and our use of reserves, it may be that we're forced to return to you with rate increases that you did not expect, that you did not plan for. And it's not something that I relish doing with you. So there's a definitiveness that I use in describing these points to you today that we all need to really dig into. We need to have these conversations together. This is taken from, this is the last slide. This is taken from the Moody's credit review that was done on us as a component of our refinancing last fall. Three things, they say at Planets Day. Three things that could lead us to a downgrade in our rating. Lower than expected debt coverage ratio, significant amount of increased and complex debt issuances, and a trend of decreasing unrestricted net assets, which in enterprise accounting terminology means reserves. A trend of decreasing in our reserves. Mr. President, that concludes my prepared remarks on this item, other than the fact that I would read right now for the record the recommendation that this board authorize this staff to offer a proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2017, 18, that achieves a debt coverage ratio of 115%.
Questions, anyone?
I do have a question. If you can go back one slide, where it says, no, no, forward.
I'm sorry, the one before.
Significant amount of increased and complex debt issuance. That includes refinancing our bonds.
No, that simplified our debt issuances. What they're saying is, don't borrow anymore.
Thank you.
How much is the overall obligations, the amount?
I'm sorry?
The obligations, the amount? Debt service?
Debt service is about 3.2 million a year, as I recall from memory. Thank you.
Isn't that a couple of $20,000 because of refinancing?
Well, Kevin was asking a question about whether that goes up or down. And one of the really nice features of our refinancing effort last year was to establish level debt service. Because there was a poison pill that for the next five years, beginning on July 1st of this year, it went up by $1.4 million, which we knew would break this agency. And so we leveled that out. And so you should expect, in answer to the question that you're not posing, you should expect that our debt service remain level going forward.
Mr. Beta, I have a clarification, question, clarification. Did you say that in raising rates, they're going to go back down in, after the next rate increase? Or that they're just, is it another rate increase coming after the July increase?
It's the latter. We did not ask for anything more than the two-year.
Okay. Because it sounded like the rates didn't go back down, which I've never seen that happen.
When we went to the board, as we recall last, I said, "Thank you all for your support." But we locked in the rates for January and July, January of 2017, July of 2017. The next year, we projected that there would be at least 5% after that. Now, what we need will know when we get through the budget process. And right now, like I said, I'm a, I will say a little, I'll say a lot more optimistic than Mr. Beta on the financial thing, but it's always better to, I do promise, go before.
No, this is a very complicated issue that I would like to have a lot more time, probably just have this one issue in front of the board. However, I'll make a motion. Well, I would make a motion to what Mr. Beta said. I don't know if you want to restate it, but I'll make a motion to that for the record.
Motion to approve that the board authorize staff to offer a proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2017, 18, that achieved a debt coverage ratio of 115%. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Director Oscar Lee?
Yes.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Gravita?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
I'm abstaining on that.
Director Gittman?
Yes.
Director Walken?
No.
Director Taituno?
Yes.
President Napolakka?
Yes.
Item 13, a resolution re-adopting Part IV, Chapter II of Administrative Code Investment Policy.
Thank you, Ben, Mr. President. This is an item more of a housekeeping nature than anything else. It's just re-adopting investment policy. I bring it to you once each year. It's good housekeeping for me to do that with you. It has not changed in any respect, apart from some of the citations that Mr. Alfred Smith has made to the General Code. Now, an investment policy in government always is predicated on the Government Code of the State of California. Ours is slightly more restrictive than the Government Code. We also run with only four members in our department, a very plain vanilla investment environment. We buy, we hold, and that's actually stated in your policy. There's nothing fancy going on here. We don't have the staffing to do that. And it's the last thing you want to see your CFO doing, is a lot of trading in the investment markets. So it's plain Jane. It's a housekeeping item in nature. And if you don't mind, I'll read the recommended action. That you would adopt and authorize the President to sign Resolution 217915, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Central Basin Municipal Water District, adopting Part IV, Chapter II of the Administrative Code Investment Policy.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Director Oscar Lee?
Yes.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Gravita?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
Abstaining.
Director Gittman?
Yes.
Director Walken?
Yes.
Director Taituno?
Yes.
President Napolakka?
Yes. Item 14, professional services contract, two-year renewal with NiGRO and NiGRO P C for Financial Audit Services for fiscal year 2016, 17, and 2017, 18.
Thank you, Ben, sir. We've been in a three-year contractual arrangement with the firm NiGRO and NiGRO. We're recommending that we, in fact, I asked the partner to make a proposal to continue this arrangement as per our current contract, to pick up the two optional years of service. I cite in your agenda item, the G F O A, Government Finance Officers of America Standard, that suggests that multi-year agreements with an audit firm of at least five years is the best practice. I certainly believe that. I believe that in this point in our history as a district that is still rebuilding, the continuity value of maintaining this relationship is very important. It's hard to start over with an audit firm. NiGRO has come in with a proposal that takes their rate of $25,000 a year, which they have fixed for three years, to a 2.5% increase in each of the two successive years coming. And this was originally a contract that was done as a form of solicitation, which meant it was a bidding process, evaluations, and interviews, and all the rest. And that was concluded in 2014. Mr. President?
Josh, I got a question, please. So the amount is $75,000?
That was the original contract.
Okay, so what are we talking about now?
We are talking about $51,890. And if you, I'll use that opportunity to read the recommended motion, that you allow the general manager to execute the renewal provision with NiGRO and NiGRO for Financial Audit Services for a two-year period, fiscal '17 and '18, and the total amount of $51,890.
Okay, I'm worried about source sourcing. Did this go out to bid again?
No, it didn't. It did in '14, and there's a two-year extension provision in the contract, which I'm asking you to approve here.
I made the, I made a motion that we go out to bid on this thing again.
Mr. Chair, for clarification, Director Chacon, our agency's done the same kind of contracts as the other. We've done a three-year contract with an extension for two additional years. It's not, it's done, it's in the standard. We've done that. I don't see any reason why we couldn't continue doing it, Director Chacon. My only, I have just a couple of questions. Is this in the budget? Was it budgeted for this year?
Oh, absolutely, sir.
Yes. And is it, are, is the increase is predicated on getting both years? Could we do one this year and reevaluate it?
Certainly could do one year at a time.
So in the contract, existing contract, the term actually allows the extension for additional two years?
Yes.
That was a contract that was approved by the board?
Yeah. And Mr. Correia is correct. You could do it as two single years, or the method that I've chosen is just to kill two years of one stone.
Josh, quick question. Have there been any performance issues, or has the work product been, you know, satisfactory or?
Above average, let's say. It's been above average, sir.
Now, did the original contract, was it, was there a competitive bidding process?
There was.
There was. Thank you.
2014.
I mean, two years, are you going to come back and show another RFP?
Exactly correct. Probably with six months or so of new time. What you have to do is understand their calendar for when they make engagements and work around
Does this, does the extension, the two-year extension or even the one-year extension, does it comply with the auditor's requests to put out to bid every contract?
Well, it's what I mentioned earlier. The G F O A best practice, which the state auditors do not reference, but I know they are familiar with the organization, is that an agency contract for a minimum of five. So what I'm saying is, this is a different contract arrangement with your audit firm. And I'm acting in this recommendation in accordance with that, and I believe the continuity is good. And actually, you provided me with a leaping off point, because Director Hawkins had asked that committee, gee, I thought we had to renew everything after three years. And I looked into that for you, sir. There is special provisions for our legal contracts that require a three-year review if you're going to go further. And actually, that's part of your agenda item that's attached to number 23 today.
In the past, one of the comments had been that we had our auditors too long. And what happened, we felt they just got complacent. And at one time, we said we felt we needed a fresh look with new eyes on it. And I think that's what you're referring to now, that have we had them long enough or too long, and is it time for new auditors to look at it to maybe review the auditors at this point? So I think that's the, what he's trying to accomplish here. And I will second his motion.
So just for the record, motion by Director Chacon to go out to bid, seconded by Director Hawkins.
Correct.
Director Oscar Lee?
No.
Director Vasquez?
No.
Director Gravita?
No.
Director Chacon?
Yes.
Director Gittman?
No.
Director Walken?
Yes.
Director Taituno?
No.
Director Napolakka?
No.
Mr. Chair, I'll go along with the motion that was stated by Josh, with the caveat that the original contract that the board approved was for three years with the ability to come back and extended another two years. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I'll go along with that, and the reasoning is that in an effort to keep our costs down and to move the audit and the work that's done with the audit along faster, I think it improves efficiencies, at least for the next two years. And after that, we would take it and bid it out, yes. That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Go ahead, go on.
Director Oscar Lee?
Yes, and I would like to add that I agree that continuity in having this service done by the same entity is important. I'm going to be an advocate for following the rules, the recommendations of the audits, and of course, the rules that have been put in place, particularly when it comes to professional services. And I would like to have checks and balances put into this system in order for us to follow the recommendations of the professional services guidelines. We will certainly do that, but when we have an opportunity to discuss and make exceptions in cases, that's in my mind, a check and balances. Having said that, yes.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Gravita?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
Before I vote on this item, I agree with Director Correia. We should keep our costs down. That's why I believe we should go out to bid on this item. And my vote is no.
Director Gittman?
Yes.
Director Hawkins?
Abstaining.
Director Taituno?
Yes.
Director Napolakka?
Item 15.
Ladies and gentlemen, it will sound a little bit familiar to the last item. This is a arrangement that we've been in contractually with Willdam to provide all the technical elements of the parcel assessment processing. So that's bringing together the charges of $10 per parcel on the assessment lower list, managing the processes through what's now the Finance Department. It wasn't a year and a half ago. This is something new that we've taken on, or taken back, I think, in fairness to Albert. We've taken this back as one of our functions. We've reduced the amount of what we're asking for, a two-year extension for the contract from $18,500 a year to $15,000. They had a provision in there in the current contract that allowed for a parcel audit for $3,500. You may have a question, when the last time we did a parcel audit was? And I don't know the answer to that. It may be a provision in the future with this firm or another that we want to exercise for the accuracy of our assessment, which, by the way, is worth $3.2 million a year to the agency. There is no best practice on this one from the G F O A. This is an existing vendor we've been in a relationship with, Willdam, very good reputation in the engineering community and water community. We're doing this in other services. And this is a two-year extension I'm asking you for again. And there is no best practice, like I say. I just believe this is being done well. It's a highly technical thing, and I believe it's good business for us to continue this
Josh, when you floated the RFP last time, how many firms proposed? I was not here then, and it may be that Albert would know. Does not recall. And how many firms are out there that do this type of work? Kevin, what would you say?
There's seven to 10. There are firms that do this type of work and are well-announced, and it's a very specialized field.
This is like an engineer, preparing an engineer's report for the assessment purposes.
Yeah, and also the whole assessment process with the accounting. The trick is just getting them. So, Josh, I look at it, it's a lot of money. We have people that are doing it appropriately, and it's working, and we're getting the $3.2 million every year on the pay, roughly $5,000. So it seems like millions go well, why mess with it? But again, the procurement stuff is.
And the $50,000 is actually a reduction of what they charged last year?
Well, no, the contract value is $18,500 a year, but we never exercised the parcel audit provision.
Got it.
So why? We just took that out. Now, we did find something else, Ms. Kumar, as a matter of fact. They've always been obligated to do our engineer's report, and we're going to take them up on it this year. Because last year, there was a struggle. It was a hard thing for our staff to do. And we need a fresh look at our engineering report for this charge, and I'm looking forward to that. Willdam has already said they're ready to go.
With the same, for the same amount?
For the same amount. For the same amount.
And typically, when you do an RFP, there is no guarantee that the new vendor that you're going to get in is going to offer the same services for you at a lower cost than what you've been paying, because sometimes, having to come in and study what has been done in the past, that's sort of like an upfront cost, that they usually load it up and balance it into the fee for three or five years, whatever the term is. So there is a possibility that your fee could increase, in fact.
There's a possibility that, sir, of course. Okay.
Josh, is this something that the agency's done year after year, hired out consultants?
For this project?
Yeah, for, for the parcel.
Well, this, Willdam has been doing it for, I mean, I've seen it as far back as six, seven years ago. They've been doing it for quite a while, so I don't remember whether what's particular was on this or whatever, before my time.
This is not something that can be done in your house?
No, no, this is technical stuff, and we're not.
And did they provide a report to the county?
Yes.
Is that what it's for?
Exactly. And August 10th is the day the live or die by, and they have to transmit the file over there. Now, technically, you can in-house, in certain operations, do this. It requires downloading the county parcel list, matching it up with the assessment, making a list and checking it more than twice. It's an extremely precise exercise. Again, it can be done in-house. I don't believe we have the capacity to do that. And with 3.2 million dollars.
That's all right, you answered my question.
I've tried it once, and it was a disaster, so I don't recommend it. Second question is, you're asking for a two-year extension?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What I would recommend is to, and you have the option to do one year?
Yes, sir.
So my recommendation is to extend it one year and go with a RFP after one year. Second that.
Director Osgulley?
Yes, with the amended.
Recommendation to enter it to one-year contract and then issue RFP after that.
Please, thank you, yes.
Director Vazquez?
Yes.
Director Granada?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
I got a quick question before I vote on that item. And how much is the amount we were talking about?
The amount of payment with the change in recommendation is 15,000.
So we're talking about 15,000?
Yes, the contract value to us.
So two years, it would be 30,000?
Two years would have been 30,000.
I'm going to have to vote no on the one year. We just voted something else, and it was more than this, but we gave in two years, and we want to cut Willdam down for one year. So, and the reason I'm voting no, because I would rather vote for two years.
Director Genni?
I have a question. The engineer's report you mentioned, is that an annual exercise we go through?
Yes, sir.
At the district? What all is incorporated into that? Because it sounds like they're willing to take a look at it for no increase in the cost, as I understand it, or would there be a potential for them, based upon reviewing that, that report, to have a higher, a higher bill submitted to us?
You raise an interesting question about what they may or may not find. I can't, I can't answer that definitively, but I'm going to yield the question to the PEs in the House, because we have two of those.
They have done this report in the past for us, others have done it. We just, one mistake, we took it on ourselves to do, but they don't have to do it. I don't see any increase in cost, and I was a consultant engineer for 35 years, so I don't see any way they're going to use this to.
Okay. I'm in agreement with them doing it. I'm also in agreement with no additional cost on this one-year contract, so I do vote yes.
Director Hawkins?
Yes.
Director Alcindor?
Yes.
Director Alpo Daca?
Yes.
And just for the record, I, I am for the contract, but I have a two-year.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Item 16, Resolution declaring budgeting principles and policies.
Mr. Prodan, I failed to mention, this is one of the few times a year when you see an awful lot of meetings, so I don't want to overstep my welcome at the podium. But I've developed something here. We have policies for a lot of other things, and we've really made great advancements as an agency as a result. A policy that says we have to do a five-year projection, but we don't have one that says what our budget policies are. There are, on this resolution, the agenda item itself is very spare, because the resolution speaks for itself to you. There are a total of 13 bullet items, spread over two pages. The first, 10 of which describe events as they currently are. How we do our budget, who's in charge, general manager, the basic timeline, how we do things. Very straightforward. The last three bullet items, I wanted to draw your attention to here, because there's some very powerful things we accomplished in this resolution, in my opinion, and it's the reason why we bring it to you. And number 11, and they're not numbered, forgive me, but capital budgets is the first two words on this bullet item, and it's the third from the bottom. Capital budgets should be established and authorized in the general ledger of accounts only when contracts for services are approved by the board. What that means is, we may have a capital plan to begin the year, we may have a five-year capital program, but it doesn't exist on our general ledger until you approve a contract. That's the way that works. It keeps everybody really clean and honest, there's no confusion. And you'll see that when I report on capital projects each month, only what you've approved shows. It's a good mechanism, and I recommend that too. The same logic on the next bullet point is true with grants. Only when you approve the enabling documentation shall we record it on our general ledger. All the above reasons why this is good housekeeping for us, I won't restate for you. This is a good practice for us. Number 13, last budget, that's not a budget item, it's a bullet item. Capital projects, grants projects, only if you have an executed contract that spans a fiscal year. Very common in both of those endeavors, that administration can budget the residual portion of that grant or capital project on the following year's budget. Trying to avoid something here. The inconvenience for you, for all of us, of bringing back a contract for approval a second time through a budget process that you've already approved, doesn't work well for anybody. And bringing back the budget for that same contract that you've already approved for you to vote on a second time. It's a common sense element to this, to this bullet. It is the way capital budgeting and grants budgeting is done in other agencies, and I heartily recommend the entire resolution to you, Mr. President. And I will, in completing my thought and my breath, read the recommended action to you before you consider this item that you approved, adopted and authorized. President, to sign Resolution 217916, Resolution of the Board of Directors of Central Basin and municipal water district declaring budgeting principles and policies.
Josh, I got a quick question. So are you saying if we voted on something before, that there's no need for this thing to come before us again?
That is correct.
Okay, for example, I'm going to bring up one. We had supported San Gabriel Valley, I believe in Mr. Leons here on the audience. If his item comes back, are you saying it's not to come back before the board?
Is it, I'm not aware of his item. Is it a capital project? Is it a?
It's a discovery center.
No, the intent isn't that, Joe. The intent is if you vote on, say, a capital project, you authorize us to, to bring it. What's been happening is you authorize it, say, in January, and the project extends into the next fiscal year, we have to bring it back here again. This way, you don't, it's already set up in a capital budget that crosses years. If however, there's a change in scope, change in budget, change in timing, then we of course bring it back to you. Great job. So it's just a matter of not having to bring the same thing back twice, identical. If anything changes, we do come back.
Okay.
Is this a standard practice in other water districts to have this sort of resolution?
Yes, absolutely. And they can be much more detailed than this. And it would be, you know, something I could recommend to the board, as we evolve as a district, you know, let's treat this like a living document. If there are things that you discover this year, in your deliberation of the budget, that you think ought to be policy, let's amend this.
Yeah, I know that there have been a number of, you know, budgeting policies and principles that we've adopted in the past year, and especially after the audit findings and the recommendations. And they, in fact, made some recommendations to amend some of our budgeting policies and principles. Is this one of their recommendations?
I don't recall this being that. I truly don't, but it is something that I've done in several different agencies. Like I said at the outset, we have policies for other things that overlap this, but we don't have a basic budgeting policy, and I made reference to the five-year requirement.
How did this come about? This particular policy amendment?
I just think it's, it's a great thing to do, and I wrote it.
Okay. Thank you.
It is not, you know, first of all, it was not a recommendation of the audit. I read that, and it's not there, and usually it won't be there. It's, it's a common practice. Most of the capital projects go beyond, the implementation goes beyond, you know, fiscal year, two years, three years sometimes. And it's just a matter of, I think, the ease of procedures. I, you know, there was confidence in there, when Kevin mentioned that if there is a change in scope or budget, of course, the item has to come back before the board again. So we're not changing those. The board will get a chance to review if there is any change. This is just to make sure that we are reducing the amount of paperwork that is owed to be created, otherwise, if they didn't have this in place. Your motion, then?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we vote no on this item. I think every item should come back to the board, either to be looked at, or if there's any new findings, that's it. That's my motion.
So, question by Director Hawkins? So no on the, on the policy directive?
Correct. That every, every item should come back to the board when necessary.
Is that just a bullet? Josh, yours is not a policy.
What Director Chacon is speaking of would be the removal of the final bullet on the resolution. That's one way of translating.
Excuse me, for clarification, I believe you voted no on the resolution.
Okay.
If you're going to, if you're going to change it, then I need to see it before I can vote on it. So I think you voted no on this resolution.
Correct.
On your motion.
It's on the board.
Okay. So does it confirm I have Director Chacon who made the motion and Director Hawkins who seconded? Director Osgulley?
No.
Director Vazquez?
No.
Director Granada?
No.
Director Chacon?
Yes.
Director Genni?
I have a question. You mentioned potential, which happens all the time, change in scope, change in schedule. What about contractor performance? How do we go about assessing the performance related to a contract, and when do you say, I'm taking this to the board? Can you speak to that for a moment?
Yeah, sure.
We do that as part of our project management. Actually, the last year, one of the things that we do is provide training for our staff on project management, which requires you continually assess how the contractor is doing. We actually have a situation like that, I want to discuss in open session, but we have a situation like that where someone's right on the borderline. So we do that, and if it is, then we will come to the board until recommended termination. Then we have to rebid to get the services done.
So we do have that check and balance, that's a, so I vote no.
And then you'll find out the way we, the board on our contracts, copious reports and the committee part, but everything is open and transparent.
Thank you. I do vote no.
In, in precise answer to your question, the state audit did identify this. And we developed, Mr. Smith and I, a document that's suitable for disclosure on the public record in the contract files, that asks each project manager to assess their contractor at the completion of the job. It's a difficult balancing exercise, as you might appreciate. You can't say too much, but you have to say enough on the record that's discoverable.
But that's at the end, we're talking during the process.
Josh, in my mind, I separate that issue of contractor, of contractor performance with a budgetary policy or recommendation that you put in place.
Absolutely, I agree with that. Okay.
Director Hawkins?
Yes.
Director Alcindor?
Yes.
Director?
I mean, no.
No? Alcindor, no. Director Alpo Daca?
No.
Fail. Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, which authorizes the president to sign the aforementioned resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Director Osgulley?
Yes.
Director Vazquez?
Yes.
Director Granada?
I'm going to be abstaining on this issue. I would like to have more time to discuss it and understand, so I'm going to be abstaining on this.
Director Chacon?
No.
Director Genni?
Yes.
Director Hawkins?
Abstain.
Director Alcindor?
Yes.
Director Alpo Daca?
Yes.
Copy.
Item 17, discussion and consideration of price index increase to the board of directors per diem compensation per the terms of ordinance 01-24.
I'm sure that the media looked at your agenda and found that this would be interesting, but I'll just, I'll stick to the facts, and I'm going to invite Ms. Hidalgo to come up immediately afterward and make some comments about how this fits with what the state auditors have said. The board of directors here has not had an increase in its per diem since 2008. In 2013, it put a freeze on itself with this per diem. It has been nine years since this per diem has been adjusted. It's $233.17 per meeting, up to 10 meetings a month. We have adjusted it using CPI data, all urban consumers, for the period of December 2015 to 2016. So there's no pony in this pile for anybody. We're not recovering nine years. This is a one-year CPI estimation adjustment of the per diem, which would take it to $237.76 per meeting. Fiscal impact is very de minimis. We estimate that this changes the rate of expenditure in the current fiscal year between $1,000, $2,000. We know also that the rate of payment out of per diem as a budgetary line item is less than expected this year. I don't mean to say this just pays for itself, and this is a real simple vote for you, but those are the facts of what we present, and I wanted to yield to Ms. Hidalgo.
Good morning, directors. Again, back in April 2016, and as a result of the state audit, there was a recommendation that the district board review its compensation and benefits. And at that time in April, we compared, we did a survey, and we compared 21 districts in Los Angeles County and looked at their per diem amounts. The result of the survey was that, at the time, with the district's per diem rate of 233.17, we were at about the 73rd percentile. And increasing the per diem to the proposed amount before you, at 237.76, will bring the compensation to roughly around the 74th percentile. With regard to the range of the agencies, 17 of the 21 agencies fell within 200 to 250 range for their per diem. There were five agencies of the 21 that had higher than Central Basin's and would have higher rate than the one proposed. Just wanted to share that information with you all.
Thank you. I have a question to try and make, please. I'm used to seeing rate adjustments of any kind, including this, to be done as part of the annual budget exercise. Any reason, is there a sense of urgency or that we are talking about it now?
I worked this out with Ms. Gomez, Ms. Aguilar, forgive me, to take this out of her hands, because I didn't think it right, for, is the closest conduit that each of the board members has, that she'd be bringing an item to regarding the per diem amount. So with that having been said, I fall upon my own ignorance in terms of the response to your question, and will have to ask Ms. Aguilar. to your question and will have to ask Ms. Aguilar.
This item is usually budgeted for. It's not necessarily brought up to live through the budgeting process, but it is included in the budget line item. Historically though, this item has usually been brought right around this timeframe in February. And part of the ordinance as well indicates that in March, they'd come up and review their per diem.
Okay, thank you very much for that, for that clarification. You know, I, there were a lot of discussions about expenditures. Your presentation is, Josh, about potential shortfalls this year and having to be extremely cautious in the future years as far as the sales and source of revenue is concerned. I know I heard a lot of concern from our colleagues who are already discussing contracts and so forth and so on. It's strange me to believe that everyone at the DIES has a desire to make sure that every penny that could be saved is saved. Now, I understand $4 or $40 doesn't make that much of a financial impact, but I think it's just a matter of principle and sticking with those principles, that what the board did nine years ago, I'm sure they did it for a reason, and I hope the reason was the same thing that we are looking at today again, which was staying true to the principles of watching the expenditure and making sure that we are going to use every opportunity to save a cent if we can. With that, my motion is to not increase the rate at this time and to come back and revisit it in the future.
I'll second that.
Director Oskulli?
Yes.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Quanera?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
Yes.
Director Getney?
Yes.
Director Hocken?
Yes.
Director Tito?
Yes.
Director Napolaca?
Yes.
Item eighteen, approving of-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. As this item takes into consideration Pico Water District, I'm going to excuse myself from the board while the board takes action on this. The board is-
In 2010, the district's contractor was constructing a 30-inch recycle water line in the Beverly Boulevard in the city of Pico Rivera. And due to an error at the time by the contractor, he built it within seven inches of the pole of the line, which is not good practice, it's not allowed. The staff at that time decided to go back, requested a waiver from the Health Department, and got the ability to encase the thing as a solution to it. But again, it's not practice as it became a sore spot between the district and Pico Water District over the years. We had, when he was working for us, we had Norris Brandt take a look at the issue with fresh eyes. He was unfamiliar. When he looked at it, he said, "It is not the best practice, it's not fatal. We should be able to work something out." The Pico Rivera Water District Board sent us a letter and basically said, "If you agree to remove your facility, then we need to work in that specific portion of the line and replace it at your cost, and this is just the overheads back, it's on top, then we'll call this issue complete between us." And so they set that up, we took it to engineering committee, it was approved out of committee. So the reason we're going to the board on it, because it does obligate the district in the future, if there is an issue where Pico Water District has to work in that particular section where the OPEC is, that we would have to remove it. It could cost $3,000 to $5,000 each time it happens. Unlikely to happen, but it could. And this will resolve this disputed item, so. What we're requesting of the board, and the motion is longer than the problem, that the board authorize the general manager to approve the dispute resolution proposed by Pico Water District as stated. Bearing the cost of replacing Central Basin MWD's air-water, air-vac release valve and all the pollutants in the same manner as the constellation, should Pico Water District ever have to be to service, replace or work on Pico Water's intersection of the pipeline impacted by the installation of the air release valve and surrounding facilities. In that regard, Pico Water District will notify Central Basin of the need to work on the mainline and need to remove Central Basin's air vac release valve and accompany Central Basin facilities in order to perform maintenance as needed by Pico Water District. Once the Pico Water's work is completed, Pico will notify Central Basin, and Central Basin shall then bear the cost and schedule the proper work to reinstall the Central Basin air vac release valve and any other facilities or equipment removed by Pico Water District that is owned and operated by Central Basin MWD. So this, we've had it checked, it's a good practice for both of us, it's the way that we moved this, if you could have been handling years ago, so we recommend this to the board.
I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Who was Norris Brandt?
Norris Brandt was the gentleman who was filling in for Jackie at the time. He sat in many of the engineering committees. Was a retired dude that was not filled out today.
I got another question. Did Nausman do any work on this thing?
They reviewed it for me.
Okay.
Clarification question, Mr. Hein. What we're talking about here is the line which comes off the top of the 30-inch recycle water main, crosses over domestic water pipe to a combination air valve. You've got seven inches of separation between that pipe, which is normally empty, and our 30-inch line.
Yeah.
Right. So the only time you're gonna have material on there, if you will, is going to either be relieving a vacuum or getting rid of some excess air which might be in the pipeline. Very minimal potential threat. Nonetheless, we've gone ahead, we've encased the line, we've got everybody involved and I spent more money talking about it than it cost to remediate. So that's the situation. And our agreement is, if something happens in the future, we're gonna take care of business professionally and-
Go forward.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Cool.
You have a motion? I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
Director Oskulli?
Yes.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Quanera?
Abstained.
Director Chacon?
Just for the record, because Nausman had something to do with this, I'm voting no.
Director Getney?
Yes.
Director Hocken?
Yes.
Director Tito?
Yes.
Director Porata?
Yes. Thank you, directors.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, appropriation of Proposition 84 Gateway Cities Capital Construction Grant in the amount of $426,511, and appropriation of unrestricted net position reserves matching portion for the grant in the amount of $105,020 with respective budget amendments.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is an item very similar to what you talked about earlier, Prop. 84 grant, the contract award, that Ms. Lenora Splinton brought to you. We're not asking for a contract award. But what we're doing here is recommending that the entire grant award and the entire amount, net amount, of the district's match obligation be appropriated by you today. Okay? There's a lot of moving parts in, just in that action calendar listing right there, but it really comes down to that. We started out the year with $484,000, $494,000 in the budget for a capital construction grant that we did not think would gain the momentum it's gained in engineering and operations. They've taken out contracts sufficient to utilize all that money. The agenda items that follow me, number 20 and 21, are predicated. Those awards of contract will be predicated on your approval of this item. Now, I realize I'm walking into something in the shadow of item number 12, because this is an expense amount that involves a match that comes from your reserves. It's the same conversation that you had earlier. And I will say that this is the net amount of the obligation. The total amount of obligation is $125,002. But we've estimated that the in-kind of soft-cost contribution from staffing and engineering will make up that $20,000 contribution. So the hard-dollar cost that you would be appropriating and amending your budget by in terms of district funding here would be $105,000. Lot of distillation that could be done on this item, lot of conversation perhaps about where this project is going as a capital construction project in the future. There are certainly questions that I recommend that you ask about what our payoff will be in the future for this as we go down the line further. But right now, this is more of a housekeeping item in terms of getting your entire budget out there that is inclusive of the district's match in construction. Last technical note, this is a match that does not count against the debt coverage ratio. It's going into capital, but it does count against our reserves. And it is something that was assumed in my display to you of the reserve spend down in item number 12. So I've made this assumption. I made it for $125,000 at that time. With those comments, Mr. President, if you don't mind, if I read the recommendation first, it's two parts. Appropriation of grant expenses and revenue and budget amounts in the amount of $426,511. That's the entire portion of the grant from Prop. 84 for construction. And number two is appropriation from unrestricted net position, our reserves, and budget amendment in the amount of $105,020.
I got a question. So there is not adequate level of staffing for the district to be able to handle the SEQA documents, hence the need to hire the consultant?
We don't have the technical capability to handle the SEQA. We have professional experts at that area.
I didn't even say that, so I said-
No, we don't. We're bringing the private most capable.
Right. The other question is that did we go through a competitive process, either RFQ or SOQ, to get the services out of Dunbar and Associates?
Yeah, but listen, a little later, this project right here, what we're talking about today is, we got a million-dollar grant, $100,000 is ours, $900,000 is highly levered, that's the grant itself.
Right.
To do that, we require a series of contractors. We have DMA as the program manager there, who wrote the grant at the time and put this together. This is for the cities of Ridwood, Bill Gardens, and Southgate. And it was the highest-rated grant actually in the area. So we have that contract. Then we have the contract for the design of the Ridwood portion, there's one consultant. There's a contract for the design of the Bill Gardens portion, another consultant. And a contract for the Southgate portion, which is coming up at the end of here, and a contract for the environmental work.
Sure.
So this one grant has five contracts that are involved in it. So it's a complicated management process. Now, with the payoff file, of course, obviously, we're gonna get designed, a million dollars designed for $100,000, which, assuming we identify the money for construction, should be a significant payoff on the district, and we believe we'll identify the money for construction on this. Now, this is, this is to complete the procurement for this grant, like I said, it was the highest-rated grant in the area.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to appropriate, appropriation of Prop. 84 grant expenses and revenue and budget amendments in the amount of $426,511, respectively be approved for allocation to capital projects amount and the appropriation from unrestricted net, oh, okay, so we're gonna pull this from the reserves?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Look, if this was already in part of that, if I remember correctly, $1.2 million projection for this year to tap into the reserves, correct?
Yes, what I displayed in that estimate in item number 12.
This is already, it's already in that, yes.
Okay. And budget amendment in the amount of $105,020 be approved for allocation to a capital project expense account. So that's my motion.
Have a second.
Director Porata?
Yes, sir.
Director Oskulli?
Yes.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Quanera?
I'm gonna abstain, because I did, I'm having problems keeping up with everything for the item number 12. Well, going back to our original conversation that we had on the first grant and matching funds, I just, I'm trying to understand if, did you say, Josh, that you did budget for this amount in this year's budget? Is that a yes or no?
It's matching funds.
No. Okay, okay. So I'm just trying to understand, and I don't want to lose a grant, I just try and understand the money situation.
The difference was, the gateway, this grant here was actually given to the three individual cities, disadvantaged communities. We put in $100,000 plus or minus as a match to make the project attractive to the rating agencies, and we volunteered to project management, because they needed someone to manage it. So we're actually managing the process through the three cities. But it's their grant now. The other grant, the Prop. 84 for the, what we call the Seaweed Project, the conservation grant, that is our grant. And as I said, that was, because it was not disadvantaged communities, we have a much higher percentage.
I understand that. Kevin, so, but this money, this $100,000, we gotta come up with matching funds coming out of our pocket?
It's coming out of our reserves.
Our reserves?
Yeah. This is coming out of our, and again, it's a capital project, so it gets capitalized. Now, can we replenish reserves? Absolutely, you can do it. That's it. But right now, that's money that's pulled from reserves, not from the operating fund.
And we're gonna see that in the next couple of items also. We're gonna be talking of the same thing, correct?
Yeah, these items, actually, we've already committed contracts that would cover, these items would be totally funded by the grant. There's no, this $100,000 is the only, you have to pull out, everything else is covered by the grant.
I stated I was gonna abstain, but I will vote on this, but I just need to fully understand this better going forward. So that's a yes, sir. Thank you.
Director Chacon?
No.
Director Getney?
I have a question. A couple of questions, actually. This capital project, what specifically are we going to be doing with it?
Building recycle water pipelines down below cell recycle water in the communities of Ridwood, Bill Gardens, and Southgate at parks, civic centers, medias.
Okay. And earlier on, I believe it was Ms. Hidalgo mentioned that we had something like 200 applicants or 300 applicants and we satisfied 20 of those. Are these, this are different?
Different, that was for conservation. In this case here, these are done in conjunction with the communities. We have talked with them actually, put in the grant in their name.
Okay.
So they want this, and these are all cooperative efforts. We don't go where we're not wanting.
Okay. Which is always good. I agree. In the, in the agenda number 19, kind of the action calendar, we have a summary discussion of this, and it's, I've got it highlighted on my computer here, and I'll just reiterate it. However, in a sudden departure from the norm, the state, together with the local distributor of the grant, Los Angeles County, three weeks ago proclaimed that matching funding for our Prop. 84 awards must be consumed before allowed to spend it, et cetera, et cetera. How did that come about? Do we, I mean, is that a question? What is that?
We've been tracking that down, and we, I've done that to the bottom of it. The nearest we've found out is that the county responded to us last week, it was a condition imposed by DWR on the county as part of the final grant negotiations. And it was imposed on three out of the four air-warp areas. So we're still researching why this change in direction. It was not that on prior grants, I've been doing grants all my career, I've never seen that requirement.
Okay. So just so I understand, we would have had to expend this $105,020 regardless, we're just being asked to do that upfront, contribute our portion right upfront?
Yeah, but the bottom line is, this whole project is gonna be wrapped up in six months, eight months from now.
Okay, thank you. I vote yes.
Director Hocken?
Abstained.
Director Tito?
Abstained.
Director Napolaca?
Yes.
Mr. President, with your permission through the chair, this agenda item 19 constitutes the background of fiscal impact for agenda items 20, that Mr. Gonzalez will bring, and 21, that Mr. Curtis will bring, for all the reasons that I described to you earlier. Thank you again.
I'd like to recuse myself from item number 20.
As Central Basin, as it was mentioned earlier, Central Basin has been awarded Property Program funding through the Gateway Water Management Authority for the planning, design, and environmental documentation of pipelines that will extend the district recycle water system into the cities of Bill Gardens, Ridwood, and Southgate. Part of the design includes an environmental analysis to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA- Quality Act, CEQA, and intends to procure consulting services in order to comply with CEQA requirements for each of the three pipeline projects, as well as confirm environmental document requirements necessary to comply with property for ground guidelines and CEQA requirements needed to be eligible for Prop 1. It anticipated the environmental level of compliance for each project, resulting in the preparation of a negative declaration or mitigating negative declaration. As far as the procurement process, the RFP was advertised per district procurement policy on January 23rd. It was posted on the district's website, it was emailed to a list of about 40 consultants, it was sent to vendors who register on the district's vendor registration link to the district's website. Not only was it posted on the district's social media channels such as Facebook, LinkedIn, and Twitter, it was advertised for 14 kind of days to meet procurement requirements with proposals were due on February 7th. In response to advertisements, staff received four proposals from environmental consultants. The proposals came from Aspen Environmental Group, KS Dunbar and Associates, Michael Becker International, and the Plan Associates. District staff, together with MCN Management, reviewed proposals received and evaluated the prospective candidates on February 13, 2017. As a result of the evaluation, KS Dunbar and Associates were selected to perform the scope of work due to their extensive amount of experience for planning similar CEQA-related work. They demonstrated a clear understanding of the scope of work needed in order to help the district comply with CEQA, CEQA Plus, and ground finding guidelines, and they've dealt with similar projects for the past 38 years. As far as fiscal impacts, our district finance director has covered the fiscal impacts with regards to this item. With your approval of that budget, we will be able to cover this contract. As far as community status, the item was reviewed by the Engineering Operations Committee on February 2nd as an information item, and is now presented before you as an action item for consideration. So, if someone has any questions?
I got a question, Mr. President. Do you have the fees for the four consultants, the proposed fees?
The, I don't have all of them, but I mean, I could tell you.
Yeah, it's a spread.
The range was, the original price range from $55,000 to?
$250.
It depends on how they interpret it. The question was, is it one focused document, or is it three separate, totally separate documents, at what level of detail you go to? Mr. Dunbar had proposed to do one, that's a $255 person, and proposed to do three separate complete documents, standalone. We asked Mr. Dunbar to consider if he had to do them as three separate ones, and what was the other thing we had there?
Yeah, and based on the experience from the consultants, they said that for an SRF loan, if the projects are not built at the same time, you need to do CEQA pluses for each one of the separate ones. So we wanted to have that as part of the contract.
CEQA plus is a little, it's a combination between a state CEQA document and a federal CEQA document, because there's some federal funds in the grant process. So with that, Dunbar actually turns out to be the lowest price.
That's what I want, so they are the lowest, yeah, as far as the fee is concerned. With the level of technical expertise that you're acquiring.
The way we try and do this is professional services, is in accordance with the state guidelines, where you don't bid them, we select based on quality, open up all the prices, and negotiate based on price. If we can't get the right level of price, we go to the second.
With that, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation made by staff.
Second?
Will call.
Director Skully?
Yes.
Director Mopka?
Yes.
Director Gargita?
Yes.
Director Chacon? Director Gargita?
Yes.
Director Hopkins?
Abstain.
President Napolaca?
Yes.
Thanks. Good morning. The way is that Director Vasitou will come back in for the next one. It's a surprise. Sliding here?
He's back there.
There you go. We'll go to the director, he's back here.
Item 22, consideration and possible action.
21, sir.
21, oh, I'm sorry.
Go on, sir.
Award of professional service contract for the engineering design consulting service for the Gateway Cities Project in Southgate to SA Associates in the amount of $324,000 plus a 10% contingency of $32,400 for a total amount not to exceed $356,400.
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome to the new directors, I've been gone from up. I'm glad to be back. Good afternoon. This project is the award of the third leg, if you will, of the three disadvantaged communities of this grant, and it's for work that took us longer to negotiate the design required for the city of Southgate because of their requirements, not, it was not on staff, it was on the city of Southgate. But, you know, it's proved out to be a good project for both sides, and we're really glad to get moving and moving forward on this. We put out a, because we had procured the previous two for Linwood and Bell Gardens, we use the same pre-qualified firms as a request for services on this particular RFP, if you will, the RFS, request for services. So there's a list there of 13 consultants. Of the 13 consultants, they're all rated and graded. The firm that came out ahead on this, it was negotiated with SA and Associates, of which you see the proposal, it is in your board item, and it also includes a scope of work. The district, this is where the financial side, this goes on more to where Josh was talking about our portion and the grant portion. And we're moving forward with this project, subject to your approval of the grant, us having upfront it. The city of Southgate's portion of the work, though, is probably the largest single of the three, and that's because it's a lot longer, it's roughly the length of, it was initially the length of Southgate, it's been moved south into Southern Avenue, and it fulfills recycle water need, taking domestic water service out of play and fulfilling it with recycled water service, which is our marching orders, more recycled water. And it'll do things such as the city of Southgate's park, Southgate High School, East Southgate High School, and ultimately down toward, on the eastern end of it, toward Jordan Downs, which crosses the Alameda Railroad. So there's good opportunity there to get into the federal housing and the like, and we'll look into funding for that from the feds, such that we can expand into the federal money. So it's a great opportunity for disadvantaged community. So with that, this was brought forward initially at the committee, and the committee, we discussed it, and it was discussed that we would bring it more fully, it is fully discussed in your board item. And with that, the staff recommendation is to award professional services contract to SA and Associates in the amount of $324,000 plus a contingency of $32,400 that would limit, or for not to exceed budget of $358,400. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions anywhere.
Lonny, can you read the committee status for me, please?
Committee status?
Yes.
Yeah, this is brought up on the February 2nd committee, and what we did is we discussed it.
Can you read it for me?
I'm sorry?
I can read it for you.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'll get to it. Committee status. Staff elected to bring this design.
I did read it at the same time.
The RFS concept and recommendation was not presented at the Engineering Operations Committee on February 2nd. However, the status of the Southgate alignment and the need to procure additional services for the design services for the city of Southgate has been provided in the past to the city, to the committee and board updates. Staff selected, staff elected to bring this before the board at this time without first bringing the matter to committee due to the need to meet deadlines and requirements under the general award, the grant award to the district for the Gateway Cities Recycle Water Expansion Project by the Gateway Water Management Authority.
For that reason, I make a motion not to vote on this item until it is brought up before committee.
Would you please explain what the deadlines are, and what the exposure is, if there are no actions taken today, or there is no action taken today? The deadlines for this project, well, first off, the other two have already ended way, and they have a requirement for work within the city of Southgate. We could not do it within Firestone Boulevard and to be part of that project.
The question was specifically about the schedule of the budget.
I understand. And so with this schedule, it's so as to get the grant work underway and keep this in focus, and the Gateway Management Authority is trying to move these forward. There is a time limit on a grant from Gateway, and so we're coinciding our projects at this time, so we're meeting the requirements of the proposition grant.
I'm trying to understand.
I believe the requirement is that the project and design is supposed to be completed this calendar year. And we got a late start on this one because of the problem with Southgate changing their mind on the alignment. We tried to do the three projects concurrently, so we saved money on the environmental, and try and get them all completed at the same time. This one's way behind now. So the problem is, right now, if we award this now, this month, then we come under contract in the next couple of weeks, and we can get the design completed by the end of this calendar year. If not, it will slip into next year. Now, we could get an extension if we had to. But this project had been extensionally discussed at the engineering committee, and we had discussed how the project had been changed around and moved on the alignment as we went through the committee. So it's not a new thing that jumped in, listener. It's something that we chose to move it to the board directly this time, because otherwise we lose a month.
So was it referred to the committee, or was it not?
No, this item was not referred to the committee. It had been discussed prior, at prior committees, but we did not take the results of the RFP to the committee.
I see.
Because of the time, our committee, for example, our engineering committee is the first Thursday of the month, so this Thursday, we have one, three weeks later is the board meeting. We had the procurement process, such a way that it came and became into it.
Forgive me to ask this question, but I'm just trying to clarify.
Abstaining.
So the committee had, in essence, approved the concept of the project?
I approved the grant and everything, yeah.
Said, go ahead and do it, it's just that this particular action, which is award a contract with specific firm, had not been referred back to them.
And normally, we do it, we get them the results of the proposals that came in, and how the ratings were done, et cetera, and they need the recommendation to take it to the board. We try and stay with the committee process whenever possible.
Right, right, right. And when does the committee meet again?
This Thursday.
Thursday, so the item will basically be pushed back a month?
It would be pushed back to the March board meeting.
To the March board meeting, which is, you are not going to have a consultant on board until probably April.
Mid-April, then. It's two weeks after the board does for us to get all the insurance in.
Right. In the proposal by the consultant, what is the duration for performance? How long is it going to take them to finish the work?
This proposal, my understanding, as I recall, is that it will be done within 18 months.
It can't be 18 months because it has to be done within 18 weeks.
I'm sorry.
That's the problem. Lonny just got, he's a little, just got back.
Jet lag, I was in New Zealand 24 hours ago, so I'm sorry. I apologize.
Jack, is there a, there's a schedule in here somewhere, just?
But it is, as Kevin stated, as so as to finish and conclude these with the Gateway Management Authority, all three of the projects, full design, Linwood's going to be first.
Excuse me, let me read to the project schedule. The project's prepared on a fast track schedule with bid documents ready for advertising on the before June 30, 2017.
June 28, yeah.
So what is the start date that they are putting on that proposal? Do you assume start dates?
Let's see when they hit their schedule.
How many months is it going to be?
March 14th, this March, in two weeks.
Is there a schedule?
That's what I was going to ask. So if you don't take an action today, it's going to be pushed back beyond the June 28th?
Yeah, there's a schedule, so.
I'll second their motion.
You have a second right now, by Director Hopkins? Motion not to approve this item until it's brought to committee. Director Hopkins, right now? Director Skully?
Uh, no.
Director Voskis?
No.
Director Gargita?
No.
Director Chacon?
Okay, are we going with my motion?
With your motion not to approve this item until it's brought to committee?
Yes, and for the reason is that anything that has to do with any contract, any kind of money, needs to be brought before the board, so the board, excuse me, before the committee, so the committee can recommend it to the board.
Director Gargita?
I have a question. If the deadline to get this out the door is March 14th, and they're going to start, what was that, June 28th date again?
The June 28th is when they expect it to be completed by.
Okay, and they have no flexible schedule in there at all?
It's a pretty tight time, because there's $300,000 worth of work.
Okay, but do we know if they have any flexibility built into that, at this time?
Normally don't.
Okay, but it still makes it pretty tight.
It's $300,000 worth of construction for the design money, and you have basically April, three months, three and a half months, it's pretty tight, because you got to do the process, you got to do your survey, and you got to do your designing, respects and all that, so. You have meetings with the city a little late.
I truly appreciate the committee process, and I think that that's something we're going to have to look very closely at going forward, and make sure that we follow that on a going forward basis, because I agree, that's a structure that I believe we've used in this district a long time. That being said, I am going to vote no.
Director Hopkins?
Yes.
Director Tatiuno?
I have a question. Since we do have a structure in place, and typically, things are done before committees, before it comes to the full board. Question is, can this item still go to the committee on Thursday and have the president call for a special meeting, potentially Friday, so this board can take action based on this item not going before the board, the committee board? So with that, I'm going to say no. Director Vasitou, would that be an amended motion on your part?
I would definitely consider that if I'm able to make a motion, a subsequent motion in regards to having this go to before the committee, and if need me, I'll call for a special meeting to move on this item.
I'll second an amended motion.
Oh, okay. Can you cancel my motion, Maggie, and then we'll go with the second motion?
Second motion, to have this item happen to me this Thursday, and to have the president call for a special meeting?
If necessary.
If necessary, all right.
Can we discuss this before we take a vote on this? Are we discussing it right now? I agree with my colleague, Mr. Gargita, that we should follow a policy if we've got that set. Director Chacon, I don't know what happened on this, obviously, there were times of the essence on this, but I think the purveyors very much want this particular item, I think the agency wants this item to help build and recycle water. I think in this particular case, we should move forward with the actions before the board, but we should try to find out why we didn't follow committee rules, and in the future, make sure that we follow committee rules and take it before the board. But I think waiting and taking it to the board, I don't know what's going to come of the committee going over these and then bringing it back to the board, I don't know what's going to change.
Well, the committee has the right to say no, yes, or let's hold it, you know, the committee has the right to do whatever they want to do before it comes to the board, look into it further.
If the committee says they don't want to move the item forward any further, and that's two committee meeting, two committee members, or?
Three things have changed, so.
No, 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 I'm talking about on this action as it was. Is that two members of the board that say?
I don't know. Kevin?
In the past, part of the board, two members were committee.
Okay, and so if they don't want to move it forward, it doesn't come before the board?
Normally, that's the case. If it's tied in committee, then sometimes we just take it on, other times I can petition the board, and there's all sorts of process. In this case, we will have new committees as soon as you folks pick, and by Wednesday, by Thursday, when our first committee for next year kicks off.
By Wednesday, by Thursday, when our first committee for next year kicks off, for the next month, rather, kicks off, then we will have three committee members, an engineering committee, who will weigh in on this item. And I might ask, but I would not take this to the board without going through the committee, unless there was a degree of urgency, unless we had discussed the item cautiously over the prior months.
And that's what I see, this is a time is of the essence on this issue, directors, and that's why.
We can do it on Friday, it just means the expense of having a separate board meeting for it, but again, that's worse choice.
With respect to the committee meeting, when is the committee meeting scheduled for?
For this Thursday.
So, as of today, who is on that committee?
Well, Director Chacon and Director. Engineering Committee. I don't know if they've been changed.
They have it currently on the engineering committee, who we have our Director Apodaca, mentor Director Chacon, first alternate Director Hawkins, and second ultimate Director Vazquez.
Okay, so we have two members on the committee, that's Director Apodaca and Director Chacon, and one says no to moving forward the?
We have three on the next committee meeting.
Okay, so my question is, if the board, if the committee votes no, or decides that they don't want to move forward with this project, will we still have a special meeting on Friday? And I'm asking because I need to make some adjustments to my schedule, my work schedule, and so I'd like to know with a little more, you know, certainty whether or not I'm going to have to make those adjustments to come in on Friday.
If the committee voted no, probably not. Now, the thing I have to remind everybody, that this is a grant project that was given to Gateway, and we are the managers of it. We staffed over this stage, and this is our grant. It is not, it's a grant that belongs to the cities of Southgate, Hill Garden, and Lenwood, that we're just the managers of, and this is not any of our money. Our money is committed already on other projects, this is totally grant-funded money. I believe in the process, what I recommend we could do, go ahead and approve it today, and we will take it to the committee on Thursday and go through in copious detail, if there's any deep problem that they have at that time, take any changes to the board later on, or have a special board meeting if we need it at that time.
Can I have the board?
Noticeable part is that we have to notice a special board meeting, what, twenty-four hours?
Can I have the board secretary tell us what the motion, the current motion is?
I have a subsequent motion by Director Acetuno, seconded by Director Scully, to have this item held over to committee, and have the president call for a special meeting to come. Prior to that, the motion was from Director Chacon, seconded by Director Hawkins, motion to not approve this item until it's brought to committee. The only one I'd give a chance to call for the vote was for the president, everyone else had voted no.
Okay, but I also canceled my motion.
You too.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. President, some observations and some summation. This is a beneficial project, particularly to three of the water purveyors. That has been proven. The concept has also been approved by both the committee in the past. The concept of doing a project like this had been approved in the past, correct?
Yeah.
The issue is, we didn't bring this particular item before the committee as it is normally the procedure. The committee members are from the same board, correct? We've had this item before us, I've had it for at least three years, I've studied it. So if there are any questions, those particular board members that are also, they happen to be a committee member, can ask the questions here and now. If there are any concerns, we can address those concerns, hopefully staff will be able to do that. Staff has mentioned that this was perhaps not following the procedures that have been put in place to refer all projects to the committee and then bring them back before the full board, and they are going to correct that and make sure from here on, we're going to adhere to that a hundred percent, correct? We have that commitment. Now, in the spirit of compromise, in order to push forward this, I thought that Director Acetuno's motion was a good motion. Now, we can all go along with that, or perhaps as a substitute, we can have what Kevin mentioned, which is, take it on the regularly scheduled meeting of the committee. If they have any issues with that, then we bring it back. If they don't have any issues with that, let's just move forward. Because they can always bring it back to the board and say, "Cancel it." But if you don't give the notice to proceed to the consultants on the 15th, according to their schedule, and I know in four months to kick out the design for three hundred eighty thousand, that's tight. That's very, very tight. Then you're jeopardizing the entire project, and I don't think that's a very wise decision.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion to approve staff's recommendation on this item, which is to authorize a general manager to enter into a contract with SA and Associates. Yeah, that's it. To approve staff's recommendation on this matter. Moving, I think it's important for us to move this project forward. You know, this item has come before this body in the past. I understand that usually, you know, these items go before the committee. Unfortunately, this is a really pressing matter that we need to address, and really move it forward, and I just think it's really important for us to get folks connected to Recycled Water, and we have this great group of folks that have collaborated with us to make that happen. So I think we have an obligation to move this project forward.
Second. Just for the record.
We have a motion in the second.
It was reported that it was brought to the committee, but here it says it was not brought to the committee.
I think maybe the gentleman's.
Speaker. Yeah. Maggie, with the prior motion still pending, do we need to have that motion acted on or withdrawn?
Need to have it withdrawn.
Yes.
So the previous one was by Director Acetuno, seconded by Director Scully, to have this item brought to committee, to have the president call for a special meeting. So that was the original motion on the floor.
So we need to act on that motion and have it withdrawn before we can act on the subsequent motion.
I think we should.
Can the second, can the person that seconded the motion withdraw their second?
Let me pose, you know, I understand and I fully support your, you know, I understand where you come from, Director Acetuno, I fully get it, and again, the point that I made was to make sure that, as a procedure calls, from now on, all of these projects, without any exceptions, are going to go before the committee prior to bringing it forward to the full board, and we have that commitment. So, but I also understand your concern, Director. Wouldn't it be possible to amend your amendment motion, if you want to consider this, that we have an approval of the recommendation today contingent on the approval of the committee, which is going to meet on the 5th? Now, if they have any concerns, then that could, you know, we could bring it back at the following meeting. And then in the meantime, you can have a conversation with a consultant to see if they can still commute that condensed schedule. If that's going to be the direction that we're going to go.
I'm fine with making an amendment to my motion.
So just to verify, the amendment is to proceed with approving the contract with the consideration that this item will be brought to the engineering committee this Thursday.
Correct. And if there's any issues, then?
That it will stop out.
I would sign the contract until I get a sign off from the committee. How's that? So, I'll sign it until after we have committee approval.
So, we should probably add that to the motion as well, that the contract will not be signed until okay is given by the committee?
Please, it's not worked legally.
And if the committee doesn't give an okay, just for clarification, if the committee doesn't give an okay, then it'll come back before the full board, or what?
Yeah, we'll see what the nature of the problem is. We'll go through in detail if there's an issue, it'll take the time we need to fix it, knowing that time is of the essence.
And Director, again, the whole focus should be not to lose this opportunity for three purveyors. So if the committee has some issues and some reasonable concerns about this, that they bring up and they say, "Do not sign the contract," then I would recommend that the president considers bringing back this item at a special meeting, so we should fully discuss that. Again, not to jeopardize the opportunity to implement this project.
Yeah, let me just add that this is a big, big project here, that's involved some of your constituencies, and we've been pushing on this for a long time, Kevin has, so that's why it's so important that we.
Understood.
Okay, just for the record, Maggie, I am asking to be taken off the engineering committee. I do not want any part of this process.
So, no, babe.
Thank you.
So, I'm just going to repeat this to make sure that we have the action correctly here. Motion by Director Acetuno, seconded by Director Osco, to approve the item today and to have this item come back to the committee this March 2nd. It will not be signed by the general manager until the committee signs off on it. If it's not signed off by the committee, then we will have the president call for a special meeting.
And by sign off, just want to be clear on what constitutes the sign off, is Director Chacon not going to be present on the committee?
Well, he's requested to resign, we'll hopefully talk a lot of. No, you won't talk, I do not want any part of this process.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should get some sort of clarification on what, not permission to authorize the.
It's not him, it's the committee, whoever the committee is, the committee actually be reconstituted after this.
Let me just, for everybody's, I am going to ask that Kevin, oh, Kevin, and I mean that you contact Kevin to what committees you prefer to be on, and Kevin and I will immediately try to accommodate you all, and we'll do that right away, so.
And we'll do that with all the directors. Do we have a clarity?
Is it clear?
Yeah, remember, we can say disapproval, unless it's disapproved, that way we know it's moving forward unless they actually.
Disapprove it.
So disapproval of the committee?
Right.
Disapproval by the committee on this particular item?
On this particular item.
Director Acetuno, is that the intent of your complaint?
Director Scully?
Yes.
Director Vazquez?
Yes.
Director Gromeda?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
No.
Director Gaddy?
Yes.
Director Hawkins?
I'm staying.
Director Acetuno?
Yes.
Director Apodaca?
Yes. Item 22, consideration of possible action regarding contract to investigate Assembly Bill 794 implementation process.
Okay. Apologies, Director, I didn't realize I was actually presenting this item. But this involves consideration and possible action regarding contract to investigate Assembly Bill 1794 implementation process. And I think what we want here is, during the last board meeting, there was an action to approve a contract to investigate Assembly Bill 1794 implementation process. We wanted to bring it back, now that we have a really constituted board, to get your feedback on whether this is something you would like to have investigated. If it is something you would like to have investigated, then develop the scope of work for the investigation, and then also comply with the procurement process as set forth in the administrative code.
I have a quick question. I mean, you don't see a conflict here with some of the board members?
What do you mean, conflict?
Okay, we're going to discuss the investigation that some of the board members voted on the previous meeting. Is that what we're talking about today?
Yeah, that is what we were talking on today. We know the details of what was discussed in closed session obviously cannot be discussed today, so it makes the discussion a little bit.
If it was discussed in closed session, I think it should be a closed session item. Am I wrong?
Well, to discuss it at this point in closed session, the only way that it can possibly be discussed at this point would be to have it under the original item that it came out of, which was a review of the general manager's performance. That review has been completed, and now it's a matter of just the contract itself, and the whether or not to proceed with the contract, or in what manner can be discussed in open session by the board of directors.
Mr. President, I make the motion, it will make some of the directors feel a little more comfortable. I would make a motion that we table this item to the next meeting, place it in the closed session, if that's where we want to discuss it, because I would like to find out what exactly the board's proposing in terms of an investigation of the process. I was very involved in the process, and I just don't see what the issue is, and many of the purveyors were there too, and we had, legislators were involved, and attorneys were involved, so I just don't understand what the process, what the issue is. I think there are some directors that have a lot of questions. I think the new purveyor sitting on the board will bring a lot of information, but if that'll give some members of board comfort, I'd make the motion to table this to the next board meeting and put it in the closed session.
When I was not present in the closed session, and so I don't tell them that, but I was requested three weeks ago by Director Hawkins to contract with another firm making builds, and a former legislator, Gary Fulmer, to do exactly the same thing that's listed here. So I don't think we should be having two attorneys looking at the same thing, so I'd just like some clarity.
We haven't heard a word from him. We've never seen a piece of paper from him, yeah.
We have a completed contract. Mr. Fulmer has a flu, we'd set him out for ten days, but he came back, we have a completed contract, we went through our procurement arrangements, takes about two weeks, have the insurance stuff and everything done.
We've never seen any of that.
But it may be that as it may. We have a contract that.
We've never seen any of that, and that's part of our stuff, is we've had a lot of questions and no answers.
And that was two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Through the whole process.
Yeah, I'm not sure that one director has the authority to tell the general manager to hire a lawyer to answer a question that only one director has. I think that's something that should have, should have never, you know, been done, but this is yet another.
I just don't want the district's money, have two attorneys looking at the same thing.
It was never a direction, it was a suggestion. I never directed him to hire anybody. I suggested that he have somebody look into this.
Okay, well, I think that suggestion should have been brought for the whole board to consider, not one.
Well, excuse me for clarification, if it was a suggestion, which is on the record, then there is no contract. If there is no contract, then it should be brought back before the board for the full board to consider. That's what I'm hearing today.
So, I should hold Mr. Fulmer's contract?
They just said it's a suggestion, there's no contract.
His suggestion, we're going to how it happened, but his suggestion was, to me, a director as general manager, within my authority, execute the contract. Now, whether it was a directive or an order of the board president, et cetera, my mistake for doing it, my question is, I simply don't want to have two contracts out there doing the same thing. I'd be glad to cancel Mr. Fulmer, or cancel Mr. whatever his name will be, or both.
Do we have a second attorney, or attorney's firm looking?
I've been requested to do this on the exact same issue three weeks ago, and that's, we have the procurement. Joseph here?
I'm right here.
How do we stand on the procurement, Joseph?
We have the contract that's to Aiken Gump, we're waiting for them to send us back, they are sent copy of it.
Oh, wait, I've got several questions, I'm sorry. What are we investigating?
First of all. Yeah, that's a good question, and that was one of the issues we needed to decide today, if the board decided to move forward with the investigation. It would be an investigation into the implementation of AB 1794, capturing the cost of what the implementation was, reference to billings that were made as part of the process, whether the process was open and transparent, what took place at the purveyor workshops, the cost of food, cost of district staff time, any additional identifiable costs, and to see, to use that as part of recovery of SB 90 claim for state reimbursement, and to consider whether they thought there were any defects in the process that the board could learn from for the next time, and those are some of the issues for consideration, but nothing has been nailed down specifically for a detailed scope. for a detailed scope.
There was an issue to look into, the way the process was handled from the beginning, when it started, when it was supposed to start, when it was supposed to end. I also believe --
So, just want to get some clarity, so we can hear you, sir.
I also believe there was probably a conflict of people who were advising us and people that we hired that was never reported out, that there could have been a potential conflict.
In my opinion, there's no investigation that is necessary. This process was very open, it was transparent. The board members were given an update every month during the board meetings and in addition given updates by this General Manager on the process as it was moving forward. In meetings, we received emails, memos. I believe that, you know, this agency done its due diligence and I think that an investigation into this matter is a waste of public funds.
Has board or the council received any written communications from anyone that has protested the process?
Protest?
The process of conducting the election and so forth and so on?
I have not seen written protests.
Have you ever seen any?
Yes.
We have a --
There's one from the city of Huntington Park.
Recently.
Recently.
Recent as Friday.
That's right.
So, that didn't come into this conversation of last week at all?
No, they were unhappy with the, that their candidate was not allowed to run as a city representative.
Right, right. But that is being handled separately.
Correct.
We have to address that because --
Yes, we have to say -- Your respect to the investigation.
Right. Now, this particular item cannot be placed, correct me if I'm wrong, cannot be placed in the, as a closed session item because there's, as it stands right now on its own, not, you know, not considering the Huntington Park issue, it's not a potential litigation.
Correct, it's not a potential litigation.
So, we have to discuss whatever we need to discuss here.
The only alternative I can think of, and if you have any thoughts, let me know, you know, this issue came up, it was reported out as part of the evaluation of the district's General Manager.
Which is a done process.
Yes, it is a done deal, so listen to me.
So, it cannot go back to a closed session. I echo what was mentioned by Director Vasquez and I think Mr. Greta mentioned that, Director Greta. I'm concerned with what we heard today about how we are spending the money. I love our attorneys, but I don't want to give more money to the attorneys for no good reason. So, what I suggest, I heard a number of issues including the expenditure of money to buy the preparations for the meetings, so forth and so on. I think staff is fully capable of preparing a report and answering those specific questions that have been brought up by the board members or anybody else for that matter, submit it to the board and if we still decide as a board, as a board, that there's still room for further investigation because we are not satisfied with the answers that we received from staff, then we can talk about one of the firms, but in the meantime, do not proceed with the work. That's my recommendation. Is that a motion?
I got a quick question. Maybe you can help me out here with the answer.
Let him know.
Were you guys representing the opposition against the legislation?
No.
How about your lobbyist, Solario? Jose Solario?
Was he representing the opposition?
Yes.
No, I mean, this is, no, in my opinion, no. He was not representing an opposition. There was a bill before the California State Legislature and he was not representing the opposition in my opinion.
Okay, so we didn't have Solario representing us and representing the opposition?
That's correct.
Okay.
But the law is the law. Right now, we have a law.
Right, we have a law.
Whatever has happened in the past, has happened in the past, we have a law that we have to abide by. I make that a motion, Mr. President, what I suggested that the General Manager be tasked with preparing a report to address all of those questions that has been brought up to date regarding the process itself or any other questions that has been surrounding the issue of this election process, submit it to the board. The board can review that report and if there are still some ambiguities that we as a board feel that needs to be adequately responded to by a third party, let's say an attorney's firm, then we can proceed with what you have directed the General Manager to do in the past, which is to secure the services of an attorney or attorney's firm to conduct an investigation.
I will second that motion.
Local call please. If I could, sorry, let me, Mr. Chair. Kevin, how much time do you think you need? First of all, do you have all the questions you need?
Yeah.
Does anyone need to give you those specific questions?
No, and I think there's certain areas I'll have to explain. For example, we have purveyor workshops every month, whether this topic was on it or not, so the cost would have to be split by topic or however, but no, we have all the information we need to pursue the process from beginning to end as to how we addressed it and then the cost of recurring doing it, both internal, external, et cetera.
And how much time do you need to prepare this report, do you think, Kevin? Do you think the next board meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Kevin, as long as you capture the cost of the sandwiches and the cookies and the coffee that you --
Don't be a middle trouble.
I got a quick question for the General Manager. Mr. Hunt, why did you let go Solario, Jose Solario?
Because I no longer needed his services.
Okay, you told me there was a conflict between the work he was doing.
Yeah, there was a conflict, not, I was unhappy and I told you this, not that he was working on both sides, but that he didn't notify me that Nassman was also Jennifer Capertolo was representing a Central Basin Water Association. And as we discussed, during the most of the period, the nine months we were working on the bill, there was no problem. We had support from Mende, they had the support. When it got to the end and they had the director, Senator Garcia refused to go from the five shrinking to four, we then as a board, as a board adopted a position of proposal as amended. That put us on counter. I thought at that time that Jose should have notified us that his firm was on both sides. Now, we handled it, we went out and got someone else to look at it. We were very capable and we did it ourselves, but that's the, there was a conflict.
Okay, but till today, we've never heard there was a conflict, but you just admitted there was a conflict.
Director, you and I have talked about this since the day of that.
I want clarification, we have --
I want to hear closed session item.
A motion and a second.
Just a quick call for questions, please.
I'll call for a question, please.
Director Oscoy?
Yes.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Greta?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
Before I vote, I make my decision. I am going to vote no because I don't want anything covered up. So, my motion, I mean, my vote is no.
Director Getney?
Yes.
Director Hawkins?
No.
Director Alcindor?
Yes.
Director Apolaca?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 23, request for proposal for District General Counsel.
Nassman was selected as a General Counsel in May 2015 with a two-year contract through a competitive procurement process, interviews with outside person on the panel and then interviews by the board. The contract was extended through June 30th at the December 19, 2016 board meeting. In our admin code, it says that every three years, the district should review this contract with its counsel and determine whether they need to put it into the best interest of the district to go out for proposals. Earlier in the month, the district had asked, the board had asked that we prepare an RFP for General Counsel services. We've done that. The board now has two options, either release the RFP for General Counsel services or extend the contract for Nassman for one year. Again, the procurement process of releasing it would be released basically first of March. They would have approximately a month to respond. We would set up interviews, have a review and chair the finalists to the board with the, probably in mid-May with the option of having a new attorney onboard if it wasn't Nassman living by July 1. A second option would be to extend their contract for a year and then review the statute. That would be the three years required. Now, why would we want to do that? One is right in the middle of a number of things, not just this installation of the new board, but the revision of the admin code to adapt to it, the implementation of the audit guidelines and that, and the number of construction projects that we have pending and contracts that we have pending that they're early up to speed on. So, in the interest of efficiency, my recommendation is we extend their contract for a year, but it's the board's call as to whether we extend it for a year or whether we offer proposals.
Mr. Chair, Kevin, do we have to take action at this board meeting on this item?
No, you don't have, that happens to take action, but you have to take action sometime soon so that we can do the procurement process prior to the end of the expiration of the contract.
No, I understand, just from my perspective, I would like more clarification on this issue before I vote on this. So, I would like to bring this back maybe at the next board meeting if there's, unless time is of the essence on this.
No, we can wait a month. This is, it was accelerated the request of the Board President, but we have one month of leave before it becomes critical.
Director, is that a substitute motion? I guess that would be a substitute motion, yes, that we table this item to the next board meeting.
I'll second that.
Director Oscoy?
Yes.
Director Vasquez?
Yes.
Director Greta?
Yes.
Director Chacon?
Once again, I'd like to make a comment before I vote on this item. I believe that we should look into the conflict that I believe occurred with Jose Solario and Nassman. So, I'm going to stay on my vote on that.
Director Getney?
Yes.
Director Hawkins?
Yes.
Director Alcindor?
Yes.
Director Apolaca?
Yes.
Sure.
And I really ask the board to indulge me on this. I apologize if I'm stepping on anyone's feet, but time is of the essence. Can we get the abridged reports?
Actually, under meeting items?
Yes, sir.
These are all informational and we can present them at a later date. None of these are actual, this time, so to get the latest calendar, we can skip. If it's the president, we can skip that. It is one o'clock and it's been a while, we're still in closed session, Stan.
I would appreciate it. Okay, so we're just --
Sure.
But we're going to just close session then? Okay. With the board's indulgence, we're going to go into closed session. Do you want to allow anyone from the public to speak before we go into?
We have one person who can add a question. We should have him speak by the closed session.
My name is Sandra Roscoe. For the ones that are new here, I'm sure you're familiar with Assistant Manager of Dalm. If not, my name is Sandra Vivar Roscoe. I'm an infamous Saltines pro-craftress. I'm a voice for good governance. I see what you're saying. I think you're awesome. You're awesome. I want your note, actually, so we can talk later on. But that being said, I myself vote for those, for the supplementless process. I had several issues to raise here and I was just a word, if you're Republican, I don't hold that against you. I was just a word, Democrat, I'm here, I'm District 63. Now, I was able to compliment you and often you, Bonde, which is sleep bird from Rock Princesses and Berkeley in the city of Cudahry. They're phenomenal in Berkeley, want to go visit them, they're in the city of Cudahry, Rock Princesses and Berkeley, and they're right off Elizabeth and Atlantic, in the city of Cudahry. I like the fact that Josh mentioned PP, which is Pores Imperial. I think we have Pores Imperial here at the city of Central Basin and they're known, and I don't need to mention their names because I'm under the powers, they're challenging the board. I like the, I like the, this is one of the best, one of the best meetings that I've attended, I've been attending for the last few years. And I think it's awesome, the integrity, the credibility and the challenging questions that a lot of the board members make along with Latisha Vasquez and with the Assistant, the newly appointed, Bogan Melendez here along with the gentleman to my right. I don't know his name, but I will definitely, I will get that language correct next time. Also, there's something else I need to address that was very important. Okay, with due respect to the Secretary of State, she should read out, allow the board count at its passing if it passed. There's another issue that I was going to address, but the thing is, I just want to address an issue which is outside of Central Basin. I was almost killed last week on my probationary, Daddy Paul's Assembly Bill 109. I almost got killed because I was probationary, that is under that new Assembly Bill, Assembly 109. Also, the police officer that was killed in the city of video was under that AB Bill and also Seabirds from last year from Lancaster. I say this because I need for you guys to talk to your legislators about this because this child would not be here today if it wasn't the protection of God's angels, because I'm here live with a swollen right eye, not because anybody hit me, I just have allergies. So, anyway, with that being said, I really appreciate your support. I really appreciate, Assistant, that you can go back, you can go to work tonight, see me now, because you did a good job last week as far as going against these people not to remove your General Counsel, not General Counsel, your General Manager, Kevin Hicks, and I really appreciate you making a difference and I see your voting very, you know, here and there, but I like the fact that you are being very objective and I'm watching you on the watchdog, as you know, in Central Basin along with the other city council. Tonight will be a city council meeting in the city of Cudahry and I'll be all over. Last Monday, I was in the LA Times, listing my opinion on the sanctuary cities and we will go into that, play that card right now, the language, but I appreciate you taking the time and giving me a voice and making sure that we need to speak before any comments or any agenda items. That means we, first, we need to make, we'll first make public comments. You're not during the agenda items, if I'm not mistaken, you need to open up the public comment because we're not during violation of the law there. Thank you so much.
So, two items for closed session today. First, pursuant to government code, section 54956.9, D1, Conference of Legal Counsel, existing litigation, Ronald Delkey versus Central Basin Municipal Water District. Second item, pursuant to government code, section 54956.9, D4, Conference of Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation, One Case. Closed session note, the Brown Act prohibits the disclosure of confidential information acquired in a closed session by any person present and offers various remedies to address lawful breaches of confidentiality. These include injunctive relief, disciplinary action against an employee, and referral of a member of the legislative body to the grand jury. It is incumbent upon all those attending lawful closed sessions to protect the confidentiality of those discussions. Only the legislative body acting as a body may agree to that verge confidential closed session information. Regarding attorney-client partners' communications, the entire body is the holder of the privilege and only a majority vote of the entire body can authorize the waiver of the privilege. We're now ready for closed session, Mr. President. We're now ready for closed session, Mr. President.
This was reported, Ken.
Yes. The board met in closed session pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point ninety-one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Ronald Belkey versus Central Basin Municipal Water District at all. That matter was discussed, and there is no reportable action. Second item, pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point ninety-four, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case. The board discussed this matter in closed session, and there is no reportable action. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
So we do have one presentation to make. A small house now, since it's late. We'd like to recognize Margarita Aguilat for her years of service. As of this month, she completed fourteen years of dedicated service to Central Basin Municipal Water District. I'd like to commend her for that. And we do have a standing ovation, but I think we've lost our recipient right now, so we'll hold that for next month. Ms. Peggy Williams.
Okay, we'll get it back then.
Yes. Thank you, directors.
Thank you. General counsel?
I'd like to congratulate the new directors on your elections, and also on the Ethics Hotline. I spoke with our ethics officer at Nixon Peabody, who monitors the hotline, and he said there is nothing new to report since our last regularly scheduled board meeting.
Chair managers?
Couple of comments. When we have the caucus this Wednesday, first of the month, we have a caucus, it is eleven thirty, and our speaker this time is on the River, LA River Project, as I know, so it should be very interesting, and your name to our service area. And the second thing I'd like to commend our new directors for their work today, a lot of hard work coming in quick into something like this and some complex topics, and we appreciate the input, and we will strive to better make it easier, and I promise no more agendas are standard, no more three-hour board meetings, or four hours. This is just to wake us up, right? I do this all easy.
Yeah, I just have one comment. I'd like to, for the board to consider moving our public comment and our standing ovations to the beginning of the meeting again. I think that's appropriate for us to consider. I think we have an obligation to hear the public out before we make decisions on issues that impact the public. And the second is, I just want to, you know, thank the new board members. You are all such a breath of fresh air, okay? And I think you're going to provide the balance that we need here on this board, and I'm really looking forward to working with everyone as we, you know, work together to move the agency and continue to move the agency in a positive direction and, you know, get folks connected to recycled water, which I believe, you know, should be a priority for us. Thank you to all of you.
Director Gregedo? You want to come with? No, thank you. Mr. President, real quick, grateful to be here and looking forward to working with the rest of the board on the issues that matter to this board and to the constituents. And I want to extend my thanks to staff and the attorneys as well, that have done a lot of hard work, particularly last week. I know how difficult it was to maneuver through all of that, you know, and then get us to the point that we are here. I appreciate it. Thanks very much for all the hard work. Director?
Thank you again. Just very quickly, kudos to staff, kudos to the general manager, our attorneys, and ditto your comments, John. Thank you.
It's the new director, Cristiano, from there, we'll talk about committees smoothly. Just take a second. After the meeting, this one. Individually? Yeah. I can meet with three of them.
Yeah. I just want to thank those that are still here for your trust in me, and I will do all I can to listen, get your advice on what we should be doing. And as you know, we've had a difficult time in the past, and you're definitely a fresh air, like our director just said, and hopefully we can get our projects in line and everything going to support the general public handling agencies. With that, meeting's adjourned.